And welcome to the September 23rd, 2020, regular meeting of the Daytona Beach City Commission. We are delighted to have each of you with us this evening. We would ask Ms. La Magna to review the procedures for tonight's meeting.
Good evening. Agendas and all exhibits pertaining to items on the agenda are posted in the lobby. Persons may visit City Hall during a public meeting to make public comments on propositions coming before the City Commission Agenda for a vote, subject to these city procedures and all social distancing requirements established by the Governor's executive orders. The commission chambers will be closed to the public. City Hall lobby will be equipped with a lectern and a microphone for public comment and audio/video feed to the City Commission chambers. Yellow forms will be provided to persons who wish to make public comment. Persons may enter the lobby to speak on an item before the City Commission at the appropriate time when called upon for two and a half minutes. The lobby will also have a limited defined area with social distancing for persons waiting to make public comment. In addition, the exterior entryway of City Hall will be equipped with a loudspeaker for persons waiting for permission to enter to make public comment due to space limitations in the lobby. Persons may also monitor public meetings from their iPhone, iPad, or other electronic device on the city's website, and enter City Hall for public comment at the appropriate times when called upon. All persons must comply with social distancing requirements while at City Hall, such as by remaining at least six feet apart. Use of facial masks is mandated to combat the spread of the COVID-19. Item number seven is your opportunity to address the City Commission concerning any item on the consent agenda. Please indicate on the yellow speaker sheet the agenda item number of the item or items you are addressing. Items or discussions not listed on the consent agenda will not be heard during this comment section. Agenda items under item number nine are public hearings, and citizens may speak at the designated time. Resolutions under item number 10 are also open for public comment, and citizens may speak at the designated time. All citizens completing a yellow form will be allowed to speak for two and a half minutes. When you approach the lectern, please speak clearly into the microphone and give your full name and address. The two and a half minute clock on the monitor above the dais will start running when you begin to speak. Pay close attention to your time; you will be told when your time has expired. Disorderly conduct in the public meeting of the City Commission. Article 2, Section 6238 of the City Code of Ordinance reads as follows: It shall be unlawful for any person to behave in a riotous or disorderly manner in any public meeting of the City Commission, or any committee, agency, or board thereof, or to cause any unnecessary disturbances therein by force, shouting, or any other action that is calculated to disrupt such meeting, or to refuse to obey any ruling of the presiding officer or such meeting relative to the orderly process thereof. Please be courteous and respectful of the views of others. Personal attacks on the City Commission, city staff, or members of the public are not allowed. All conversation must take place either at the lectern or on the dais so that everyone can hear the business being discussed tonight.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call?
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Commissioner Traeger?
Here.
Commissioner Delgado?
Here.
Commissioner May?
Here.
Commissioner Gilliland?
Here.
Commissioner Henry?
Here.
Mayor Derrick L. Henry?
Here.
We'll now move on to item number four, which is approval of the minutes of the August 19, 2020, regular City Commission meeting.
So moved.
We have a motion from Commissioner Reed, and we have a second from Commissioner May. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries 7-0. We'll now move on to our agenda. If there are any changes, our city manager will address them.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under item 8J, there was a figure of 25,000; that should have been 250,000. Add 8K, fee schedule for ordinance 2020-274 to consent items, and add 9G preliminary and final plat for Temuco Town Center Parcel A to the administrative items.
Motion approved as amended.
We have a motion and a second. Motion from Commissioner Gilliland, second from Commissioner May. There are no questions or comments. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
Okay, we have no presentations tonight, so we'll move on to item number seven. This is for public comments by people addressing the City Commission on items on the consent agenda. And I have one speaker; it is Mr. John Nicholson on items 8E, G, and J.
John Nicholson, 413 North Grandview Avenue. I don't need to do J because Jim just solved that one. E, 125 South Palmetto. When it went before the board, it was going to be used for additional parking, especially for the farmer's market. There was supposed to be an office there for the farmer's market. She's using a closet on City Island at the bathrooms, and I thought she was going to get a little bit larger space, and then we're going to use the parking. If code is there, and the police are there, and I don't think it's going to be a substation -- it might be, but the amount of automobiles would take up that lot. There are not that many parking spaces; I walked it off. There are very few. Are we going to consolidate all the departments around the city that deal with these items? Because we, on the beach side, we have a code enforcement at our Harvey Street Station. So if this is the case, then we really ought to have a new City Hall, because we can't keep farming out and farming out because it gets to be expensive. A-1A, I want to thank you for A-1A. It's been seven years since hurricanes first took the light fixtures out. The trucks constantly hit them. We've had two hurricanes, so we have, what, 50, 60 of our lights out in some of our most prime areas, especially where the tourist walk. I walked it the other day. In one block, we had 27 lights out in one block with the tourist walk. We have two lights out now on the boardwalk. The last time a light went out on the boardwalk, it took two years to replace. I'm hoping that these two lights, one at Joyland and one at the steps to the arch at Main Street, we don't wait two years to fix those lights. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Nicholson, can I ask you a question? A few months ago, you asked -- you brought up the lights, and so we brought that up with the city, I think, at some point, Mr. Chisholm?
Yes.
The lights on A-1A, did we take care of them at all? And I remember we had a conversation.
We put them out to bid. We've ordered to bid. The project will be moving away shortly to replace and repair those lights.
Okay, thank you so much, because I recall that conversation from before. I remember.
It's G, I'm just like, agenda item. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
That was my only speaker for the consent agenda.
Motion approved, consent agenda.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Gilliland and a second from Commissioner May. There are no questions or comments. All those who are in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
Okay, so we'll move on to item number nine, which is our public hearings. Item 9A is the Budget Division, City of Daytona Beach Fiscal Year 2020-21, Millage and Budget Adoption. The first item is number one, which is public hearings, and I don't have anyone signed up for the public hearing on the budget item.
Fred Holter, Budget Officer. I have a presentation which I was asked to give as soon as it appears. I still don't see it. Well, they can always do it from notes. Ah, there we go. We're going to talk first -- we're going to talk about several topics during this presentation. The first thing is the millage rates. As you know, what we're doing is proposing a millage rate of 5.5300, which is below the rollback rate of 5.5357. It works out as 0.10% tax reduction from the rollback rate. We're also proposing a City of Daytona Beach debt millage rate of 0.2543. Last year's millage rate was 0.2771. This is the amount we need to pay off our general obligation debt, and it's just that one's a mathematical one. Historically, we have been dropping our millage rates since about fiscal year 13, 14. This is the millage rate starting in the year fiscal year 2000, 2001, and you'll notice it's gone up and down, but we've been on a long-term downward trend for the last seven or eight years. So that's pleasant, I'm sure, to the property owners. We are not at the lowest level we've ever been, but obviously, we're nowhere near the highest we've ever been. But that's -- millage rate is only half of the equation. The other side of revenue is the property values. If you've noticed here, the property values, the taxable property values from the 2000, climbed from 2000 to a peak in 2007, '08. Then we dropped because of the Great Recession, and we've been slowly climbing back. Unfortunately, we are still not back at the peak level. We are at $5,598 million taxable values for the city at this point, and that does include a few annexations along the way, but we have not yet returned to our peak. If you multiply the millage rate times the taxable values, you end up with property tax revenues. The solid line is the nominal tax revenues. You know, a dollar bill now is worth a dollar bill 10 years ago, 20 years ago, whatever. Those of you who are my age remember when you could buy a paperback for 95 cents. Now they're, what, $5? Inflation kicks in, and that's what the dotted line represents. The dotted line shows what constant purchasing power would be based upon, starting with your fiscal year 2000, 2001, adjusted for inflation. I'm using the Fred Inflation Rate, which is -- Fred's actually the St. Louis Federal Reserve, but I like the name, so I use it. If you notice, we are, even under nominal dollars, we are below what we were collecting in the year around 2006, 2007. Once you adjust for inflation, we are millions of dollars below what our maximum revenue was. So we are still long below what we had at one point. But taxable value is only part of the values of the city. If you notice the red one, this is our just value, the property appraiser. In fact, on the handout that you got from me, the very last page isn't mine; it's from the property appraiser. It goes into detail as to the difference between just assessed and taxable value, all the different exemptions and things. You'll notice that the red area, which is the difference, the blue is the taxable, red is the just value, that is growing. In fact, if you go look at a percentage basis, you can see that once upon a time, the taxable value was 70% of the just value. We're down to 60% for various reasons, including exemptions and things like that. So even as the city gains in value, the taxable value doesn't go up as fast. That's just to give you some history on all this. It's nice to know what we are made up of. On the left side is the split of the city's properties. You'll notice we've got 1% agricultural here in Daytona Beach. We have 3% of the value is vacant land. The government is 15% of the total value of Daytona Beach, various counties, et cetera. Residential is 40%, but if you go to the right, now we're looking at taxable values. Notice that the slice labeled governmental disappears because governmental land isn't taxable. Another one that disappears mostly is institutional. Most institutions are nonprofit and not subject to taxes. 44% of the taxable value is made up of residential property here in Daytona Beach, and 35% is commercial. This is just to give you an idea of what we actually are basing our property values Now, this is the one that I found most impressive when preparing the slide. I'm looking at new construction. What happened over the last 10 years in terms of new construction? We were running around 45 million, 20 million, 62, 93. We broke 100 million last year. This year, we are over $208 million worth of new construction. That new construction alone is generating, with the proposed millage rate, $1,091,625 of property values. From talking to people in Development Services and the city manager, we expect that new construction to maintain at that level for the next few years. We have many projects already in the pipeline. Now, it's not going to last forever, obviously, but that's a nice number that we'll be looking at, and we see it continuing on for at least a few years. So what is the impact of our proposal on the typical taxpayer? Well, first, we need to define what a typical taxpayer is. Last year, an average residential, single-family home had a just value of $151,925 and a taxable value of $89,670. That was the average. I know median is a better number, but I've got average because it's easier to calculate. Let's assume a 3% increase in value, mainly because that's the increase in taxable value if you're homesteaded. So what you now have this year would be a taxable value of $156,483 and a taxable value of $92,360. What does that person's taxes look like? Well, last year, they paid $2,005.31 in taxes. This year, given the latest millage information I have, and since not everyone has adopted their budget yet, these numbers are, like, can change. They will be paying $2,027.85. This is a $22.54 increase in their taxes, assuming these millage rates are right. The biggest single change is the hospital authority. They are moving from $31.81 in taxes to $91.24 in taxes. That's a $59.44 increase through this typical homeowner. Most of the property taxes are going down across in the city. Other than that one, there's also a slight increase for the DDA, and really small for the inland navigation district, an additional nine cents, and a little bit for Volusia County's operating. So we're talking about a total property tax increase of 1.12%, assuming these millage rates stay the way we think they are.
Fred, would you point out the Daytona line? Just people that are home watching this, would you point out the Daytona line on there?
Oh.
Because we went down, so.
Okay, yes. Under this -- good point, thank you. That would be difficult to read on most television. The Daytona Beach operating number last year for that typical house, their taxes would be $525.35. This year would be $510.75, a reduction in taxes of $14.66, 60 cents, or 2.78%. That assumes they're the typical house. Now, everyone's condition is different, so some may pay more, some may pay less. And also, the debt went down by $1.36, so the total amount from the city is actually going down by $15.96 for this typical house. This pie chart shows how any -- this is more across the board. Instead of looking at typical, anyone, if you've got the million-dollar mansion, if you have a very small house, this is how your taxes are going to be split up. 34% of your money is going to the school board. 25% is going to the city's operating. 27% of it is going to Volusia County's operating. All these others are very, very small. The DDA is 5%, and that only affects those people that are in the Downtown Development Authority. Most of the city's not. Our debt and Volusia County's debt's 1% of their money. Pond's inlet is so -- and the inland navigation district is so small that it rounds to zero. Mosquito's 1%. The hospital's 5%. Even with the large increase, it's still a very small piece of the pie. And the water management district is 1%. So this is how your property tax bill is split if you live in the city of Daytona Beach and in the Downtown Development Authority.
Could you please clarify the 5%? I mean, I understand it that comes from the downtown businesses. Could you explain that to people, please? The DDA 5%?
The DDA -- sorry. The DDA has its own separate millage. The DDA has, for years, I don't know how long, I don't know if anyone here remembers how far back it goes, has been doing a 1-mill property tax rate on the land in the DDA. They've done the 1-mill if the rollback is up, and they've done the 1-mill if the rollback is down. The DDA is small enough that up and down happens a lot more than it does when you look at something as large as the city. This year, the 1-mill is actually an increase over rollback. Last year, it was a decrease over rollback because it's such a small area, it just wiggles more.
And so that applies just to the businesses in the downtown area, correct?
It's the DDA area, and I'm pretty sure there's no residential. Reed, are there any residences in the DDA area? There are a few residences there.
But it's a geographic area downtown, and they're paying that. All right, thank you.
So what is our proposed budget? Well, this is my double-counting slide. Everyone remembers this one. What we actually have, we have a budget of $273,421,107, but reality, the current revenues, this is what we're really seeing as revenues into the budget, are only $178,96,937. What's the difference between those two numbers? Primarily, it's double-counting. We have transfers from fund to fund. You get a dollar into Fund One, you take that dollar and give it to Fund Two, that counts twice. We have transfers of $51,389,21. We have an internal service funds, where you pay for your IT costs in the general fund. You pay for IT, it goes into a separate fund, the IT fund. You have to count that as revenue to the IT fund, as well as an expense, of $14,946,504. We also have indirect cost allocation. Certain funds are charged for my services, the city manager's services, finances services, so we spread the costs out of the general fund, and those add up to $1,463,384. In addition to that, we are rolling forward, most of it's showing up in this meeting, $27,525,261 of money from the current year into the new year. A lot of this money is money that we've put aside, reserved, to just have that cushion, the fiscal integrity reserves, that sort of thing. The rest of it is money in impact fee funds and things like that. So we are only dealing with $178,96,937. But let's look at one other piece of the revenues. We've all worried about COVID effect on our revenues. This is an example of not our opinion, but the state economists. We have five revenues that flow through the state government and into us, the communication service tax, the state revenue sharing, half-cent sales tax, local option gas tax, and the five-cent gas tax. In every one of these cases, the state economists think that there is going to be downward trend in next year's revenues, ranging from $100,000 roughly in the gas tax, the five-cent gas tax, to over $700,000 in the half-cent sales tax, that they think the economy is going to be affecting our distribution of money. So we are looking at sizable reductions in our other revenues next year. So I just wanted you to see this as an example. Now, how good is their crystal ball? Well, better than mine, but no crystal ball is perfect, so take these with a grain of salt. I am hoping they're conservative, and we end up with more money than we're expecting. Yes?
The half-cent sales tax?
Yes.
Can you explain that a little bit?
This is money that we -- the 6.5% there is -- half a cent comes to the county and to the cities and is distributed through this complex formula.
Right.
This is not the infrastructure sales tax or anything like that, that this is money that we then get.
Okay, just want to make sure that was clear, that we're not collecting.
This is not the infrastructure tax or the transit tax, because we can't budget that because that hasn't passed.
Right, right.
And I wouldn't be able to compare that anyway.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Now, let's look at the expenditure side of the budget. Same thing as before, there's a lot of double-counting. In addition to the double-counting I talked about before, we've set up the fiscal integrity reserves and things like that. There's $29,76,680 of that, which is actually slightly higher than the amount of money we're rolling forward. So the current expenditures, what we have budgeted to spend next year, is $176,545,518. This means that we are increasing our reserves a little bit, which is good, because we ate into the reserves significantly as we were going through the bad times. We think in reality, with any luck at all, there'll be more money. We're taking a conservative spend on revenues, and if we can keep expenditures and whittling down, we may actually be able to build up our reserves more. Looking at how we slice up the pie, how do we slice up the spending? First of all, let's just look at the operating departments. These are the day-to-day operations. Public Works is 16% of our expenditures. Public Safety, which is the fire and police departments, is 33% of our expenditures. Cultural and Leisure Services, which also includes Business Enterprise Management, is 10% of our spending. Development Services is 6%. Governance, that's me, the city manager, city clerk, city attorney, finance, those things that you need just to run a government, is 15% of expenditures, and utilities are spending 20% of the money. And this is just the operating money. Utilities also has capital and things like that. If we take a step back, we're going to now include reserves and things like that. If you look at function, the general government spending is, and these are, by the way, defined by the state, these different functions. It's in their state charter account. The general government is $32 million and change. Public Safety is $59 million. Physical Environment, which would be utilities, solid waste, water and sewer, that sort of thing, is $61 million. Transportation, that's the portion of Public Works, which is the roads and things like that, is almost $8 million. Economic Environment is $6 million. Human Services is $0.5 million, and Culture and Recreation is $14 million. And other uses are reserves, transfers, debt payments, and other non-operating, it's also those types of categories. So that's how we're spent, that's how the operating money is being spent. And if we look at objects, this is where you realize how much of our budget is spent on people. $87 million is salaries, benefits, all of those things. FICA, operating costs are $76 million. Capital is $11 million. Debt Service is $14 million, and Grants Today is about $0.5 million. So this is how we're spending the money that we're taking in, which, by the way, brings to one point, that we have basically, this year's budget, tried and kept a cap and kept it very low and not allowed for increases. The major increase we had in the budget was the COLA, the Greece. And when you look at the fact that we're dealing with $87 million of personal services, that's more than the increase in property taxes for the year. That's more than that $1 million that we got from new construction just on the COLAs. So what we need from you is two things. We need you to adopt the millage resolution, either as is or with changes, and the budget option. Those are the two things we need. And now, Mr. Chisholm is regretting that he ever let me talk. Thank you very much.
Y'all have any questions for Fred? No questions?
Well, you know I always want to lower the millage, because even though the millage might be lowered, the property taxes have gone up because the valuation have gone up. Unfortunately, for a lot of the people on fixed incomes, social security has not gone I know a lot of the people are hurting, a lot of people are out of work, a lot of people, even $100 or $27 or something, means a lot, because it's what they don't have. Unfortunately, probably some of these rental units will have to, will go up because of the, they weren't able to get rentals for a while. I would very much like to lower it, if possible. I know Mr. Chisholm has taken his sharp pencil, and I know he's probably done the best he could, but I still would like to give a break to our residents. Things like even the new construction only said, "realize $1 million something." Was that for last year, or is that on the coming year, or what?
The new construction money is based upon last January 1st, which is what our property taxes are based on, compared to the previous January 1st. So anything that's opened up since January 1st will be in next year's budget hearing. So we still, that's why we see an increase in next year.
That's the way I read it, too.
Did that explain it, did I merely?
No, no, that's how I figured it was. I just wanted to make sure I was doing it right.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? No? Okay.
Okay. Then, item number three is the resolution. Resolution determining the amount and fixing the rate of taxation in making the annual property ad lorum levy in the amount of $5.5300 per $1,000 of non-exempt assessed value for general fund operations of the City of Daytona Beach for fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2020 through September 30th, 2021, which represents a 0.10% decrease from the rollback rate of 5.5357 and the voted debt service millage rate of 0.2543, and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. You have any questions or comments? All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
Okay. Item number four, which is the resolution adopting the budget for the fiscal year October 1st, 2020 through September 30th, 2021, for the City of Daytona Beach, prescribing the net sources of revenue in an estimated amount of $273,421,107, setting forth expenditures and transfers in the amount of $273,421,107, of which operating expenditures total $210,532,633, transfers $51,389,21, and capital expenditures $11,499,453, and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Gilliland. We'll take a second from Commissioner Reed. Do you have any questions or comments? All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
Now, we need to adjourn for the...
Oh, for the DDA. Okay. We will adjourn for the DDA to do their business and we will reconvene in just a moment.
Commissioner Juanita May?
President.
Cheryl Cook?
President.
Tammy Kaczynski?
Here.
Joseph Hopkins?
Here.
Michael Schnaps Tyler?
Here. We have a forum, we're regular board, we have the presentation...
Good evening, DDA board members. The DDA is projected to receive revenues in the amount of 141,700 in ad valorem tax revenue based on a one-mill tax rate, which was recommended at your August 26, 2020 meeting. And that is greater than the rollback rate of 0.9587 by an amount of 4.31%. The total budget is 267,097, which is in the backup documents and breaks that down, which includes 98,440 in payments to the downtown CRA, which is returned to the DDA by an agreement. Also included in the budget is 84,000 for marketing and promoting the downtown, 50,000 for events, and 28,000 for operation of the farmers market. No funds are proposed to be allocated from the DDA's unreserved balance. This concludes my report.
Okay. There any questions for Mr. Berger? Okay. This is a public hearing. Do we have any speakers?
I have no speakers.
Okay. I know we have two resolutions tonight, so can we have the first, please?
A resolution determining the amount and fixing the rate of taxation in making the annual property ad valorem levy in the amount of 1.0000 per 1,000 dollars if not exempt assessed value for general fund operations of the Daytona Beach Downtown Development Authority for fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2020 through September 30th, 2021, increasing property taxes by 4.31% from the rollback rate millage, from the rollback rate millage rate of 0.9587 and providing an effective date.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Any comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, five, zero. May we have the second resolution, please?
A resolution adopting the budget for the fiscal year October 1st, 2020 through September 30th, 2021, for the Daytona Beach Downtown Development Authority, prescribing net sources of revenue in the estimated amount of 267,502, setting forth expenditures in the amount of 267,502 and providing an effective date.
Do we have a motion?
Motion approved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, five, oh. There being no further business, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Good evening and welcome back to our regularly scheduled commission meeting. We will continue at this time.
Continuing under our public hearing items, item 9C is the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, the Blake PD rezoning. This is an ordinance on second reading, quasi-judicial hearing. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezone 14.4 plus or minus acres of property located at the northeast corner of the intersection of LPJ Boulevard and Williamson Boulevard from City PDG Plan Development General and Volusia County R2 Urban Single Family Residential to City PDG Plan Development General, approving the Blake Plan District Agreement authorizing development of an assisted living facility in healthcare and commercial uses, subject to conditions, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement, repealing all warrants or parts of warrants in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
We'll take a motion from Commissioner Traeger and a second from Commissioner Gilliland.
And I do have Michael Schnaps Tyler here on behalf of the applicant for any questions.
Questions for Michael? Okay. No questions. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven, zero.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 9D, it's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Mobile Food Vendors Code of Warrants Tax Amendment. This is an ordinance on second reading, public hearing. An ordinance amending the City Code, Section 103-2, to remove licensing requirements for mobile food vendors and thereby complying with new state law prohibiting local governments from requiring a local license, registration, permit, or payment of a license, registration, or permit fee for mobile food dispensing vehicles operating within the city, repealing all warrants or parts of warrants in conflict herewith and providing an effective date.
So moved.
We'll take a motion from Commissioner Reed and a second from Commissioner Traeger. All those in favor...
I do have a speaker, Mr. Mayor, and it is Mr. John Nicholson.
Okay.
And Jim, just, Jim, just clarifying, every, all the other rules stay in place. This is just about the licensing and the fee.
That's true.
Okay.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granville Avenue. And Robbie just answered the question. I know you have no control over the licensing and whatnot, but you all discussed this for several hours. So, I'm presuming, Jim, that the distancing and where they could park and restaurant, all that?
All that's...
We are allowed to keep that?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I needed. Thank you.
All right. We have a motion and a second and an answer question. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven, zero.
Okay. Moving on to item 9E, it's the Police Department Amendment to the Municipal Ordinance, Chapter 14, Animal Control. This is an ordinance on second reading, public hearing. An ordinance amending the city's animal control ordinance, Chapter 14 of the City Code, by prohibiting the tethering of dogs or cats except when specified conditions for humane tethering are met, adding and revising certain definitions, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, providing for codification and separability, and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
All right. You have a motion and a second.
And I have one speaker, Mr. Mayor. It's Debbie Dorino?
Yep. Ms. Debbie?
I see you right there. Ms. Debbie?
I wonder if they can hear us?
She's coming. Yeah.
Okay. Hello. Debbie Dorino?
Hey, welcome, Debbie.
Hey, how are you?
Very well, thank you.
Good. 6795 Calistoga Circle, Port Orange. First, let me thank you all, especially Ms. May, Commissioner May, for allowing this to be presented for, you know, consideration. As you know, Ponce's Law was my bill that passed. The animal abuse database in Volusia County was also mine that passed. And as a result, I get a lot of calls and a lot of people asking me to help with animal issues. I take animal cruelty, animal abuse, very serious. So, it's been a long time since your ordinances have been updated. And for that reason, I thought now would be a good time to go to actually each of the cities in the county here and see about getting this put on your agenda for a vote, hopefully to pass. Holly Hill just voted on their, well, not voted, but they just agreed last night they're going to, you know, vote it in. Hopefully, you'll vote it in as well. Have Port Orange presenting it at their next meeting. The attorney is reviewing it right now. Ponce Inlet has, already has an anti-tethering, but they're going to, you know, add the adequate shelter definition into theirs. So, there's, there's lots of calls, like I said, that I get, and a lot of those are fielded over to your animal control. And a lot of times, they can't do anything about it because there's nothing on the books to enforce it. So, this should help them as well as the animals. And I appreciate you listening and taking consideration.
Okay. Thank you and thank you for your work in the area of animal welfare and we appreciate your community service and involvement.
Thank you. And just one more thing to add is, for the 2021 legislative session, I am going to be adding in some of that wording as a bill. So, just know you have it before they do.
Okay.
Thanks again for everything you do.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. We have a motion and a second. No further discussion or comments. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
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 Those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries, seven, zero.
Moving on to item 9F, it's Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Servia Hills, Daytona Beach, Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment. This is an ordinance on first reading, public hearing. An ordinance adopting comprehensive plan amendments in accordance with Chapter 163, Part 2 Florida statutes, amending the future land use element, Neighborhood A, with respect to 3.6 plus or minus acres of land generally located on the east and west sides of North Atlantic Avenue, south of Gulf Boulevard, and north of Driftwood Avenue, to reduce the maximum floor area ratio for the property referenced above from 3.0 to 1.82 and establishing a maximum of 250 dwelling units, repealing all warrants or parts of warrants in conflict herewith and providing an effective date.
So moved.
All right. We have a motion and we have a second.
I do have Mr. Rob Merrill here on behalf of the applicant for any questions.
Okay. Anyone have any comments?
Could you just go over what the square footage is going to be per unit? Please, sir.
So, this is a comprehensive plan amendment, and the only thing that we're really doing with this one, Commissioner, is the FAR limitation and the density amount.
Okay.
Okay.
So, are we increasing the density?
Absolutely.
Yes. So, the actual, the square footage, the size of the building will be smaller, but the number of units will be greater based on the size of the unit being smaller. I've got the developer here, if you want to get into it. Normally, we wouldn't get into that during the comprehensive amendment, but we can if you like. We have a PD rezoning agenda, item of first reading tonight, too, about this case. And Tish, for the, for the record, I was only putting my questions in in case they had questions for me. So, same thing with the PD.
Mr. Mayor?
Who's that?
That was Mr. Delgado.
Oh.
That was like...
Yes, God.
It just didn't, it just didn't sound like you. I just couldn't, you sounded like you were coming out of a can. Go ahead, Commissioner.
I will get out of the can. My, that was my question is, I, I mean, I have some questions for Mr. Merrill and his client, but I thought it would be, I think, I don't know how, it doesn't seem to me appropriate necessarily to do this at first reading, right? My understanding was really just kind of supposed to pass this on to, and then talk about it at second reading. But my, my request, and I'm sure Mr. Merrill will do that, is just to make sure that he and his client, or at least his client would be here for the second reading so that we can direct questions. And I, I'm going to make an effort to meet with them, you know, on my own time, but I just want to make sure that they're there to answer the questions so that we can do it at the, at the more appropriate time, which is, I believe, on second reading. If I'm, if I'm incorrect, then I apologize, but my understanding is that would probably be the better time. So, I just want to make sure that everyone is there because I, I do have some questions I'd like to ask of them at that time.
Well, I don't know if it's not appropriate to ask questions at this time. I think it's always appropriate to ask questions. It doesn't mean we're not going to move it forward because I have some comments that I want us to, we have to acknowledge as it relates to this item. So...
Okay. Well, yeah, I wasn't suggesting it was necessarily inappropriate. I just, I intended to ask my questions at the second reading and I just wanted to make sure that Mr. Merrill heard that and his clients heard that so that, you know, and the, because I'm going to speak with them, like I said, in my own time, but so that we can have a good public discussion if need be. Just wanted to kind of make sure that they were going to be there at the next reading. That's all.
Okay. Okay. Well, from my perspective, this is, you know, the first planned development that comes before us that essentially meets the threshold of our recently adopted expectation that planned developments would come before us with a plan that in some way addressed affordable housing. And I'm sure that, you know, I realize that this probably appears to have come out of nowhere for many people who are in the developmental process, but it is, it is a priority that we are addressing with all due immediacy. And this is an ideal scenario for us to address and look at because there is a set of zoning standards that are in place. There are expected density requirements that are in place. And there is the question being raised and requested of this commission, this body, of increasing the amount of density for the purpose of this development in this project. And my perspective is that, my question is, what is the benefit to the public as it relates to something that we are stating as a priority for this commission that is being addressed? Now, I am certain that you all have no intention or plan or thought to address that tonight, and that's okay. But my expectation is, you know, and I realize that we don't have a clear set of expectations, but we're talking about improving, increasing this density. What is it, 35, almost 40%?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I didn't do the exact calculation, but it's substantial increase in the density as well as some other issues that I really don't have a whole lot of exception to, but from this point forward, we have to make certain that there is a public benefit from my perspective for me to be supportive. So, what I would suggest is that between now and, and I will allow the others to speak, in the next council meeting, that you, the applicant, meet with staff to determine what a reasonable contribution or, I don't know how you want to describe it or define it in terms of language, but it is a contribution because we're, this is a, this is a contribution from the public. So, in order for this contribution, I don't know, to be agreeable, to address, how are you going to help us to address affordable housing, is the question that I think you guys have to meet with staff and staff is going to have to do some research to determine, you know, what is a reasonable public benefit. When we do projects, even a project with Brown and Brown, and even when we do TIF, we're looking for some return to the public. And we're stating, I think, as a commission, that this has to be something that's a consideration. Doesn't mean that we're, that the commission will agree to what I'm saying, but I'm just telling you what I am expecting for my support to go forward. And that's, that's my position.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
To jump in behind what you were saying, and I know that we didn't really get to discuss it at the last meeting as much as we would have liked to, you know, as far as the affordable housing concept as, as relates to these planned developments, obviously, you know, currently, they're supposed to be a public benefit. And, you know, one of the things that I, I think that, you know, we, we need to talk about, make sure that we come up with something that's fair and, you know, not unduly burdensome in the regard that not every project and not every builder is well-suited to do affordable housing. And this is a good example of a property that maybe because of where it's located is just not ideal for affordable housing. But at the same time, you know, we want to make sure that developers do do something for affordable housing, consistent with what we've talked about in the commission before. So, that's why I, I think that, you know, when we consider what we do, maybe the best bet is to have a, either a trust fund or a specific account earmarked to let developers contribute, maybe a predefined amount to that fund so that then we can work with other developers that are experienced at building the affordable housing projects that we need and have the right parcel of land, the right structure, the right debt structure, and the right connections with banks to make it workable. So, I may, I want to make sure that, you know, that's something we talk about because I, you know, I don't know if the message we want to send to developers because I, I know... know one of the doctrines is that if, if they're sort of alerted to our proposed legislative actions, they can be bound by them, so I'm probably misconstruing that, but to the sense that we're telling people, hey, here's what's happening. One of the things I hope we can do is create an option so that they can still do affordable housing, but not on that specific parcel of land, either through contribution or working with another company to do something at the, you know, in the future, you know, and I'm probably in favor of some kind of defined plan with tax incentives and things like that, and that's obviously a much larger discussion for a later time, but as far as I'm concerned, I think it's really important that, that if we do this affordable housing initiative, that we let developers know that, you know, we are open to the idea of, and they could even propose it on a case-by-case basis, of doing something where they set aside money or property or something of value earmarked for affordable housing, but not necessarily on the property or the parcel that they're seeking to develop. To me, as long as the affordable housing prong is fulfilled and funded in a meaningful way, I think that's what the point is, and I don't know that we want people worried that they're going to have to fit an affordable housing component into their specific plans for each, each site, and maybe that's what everyone kind of understood, and maybe I'm the only person who thought that that wasn't clear, but to me, that's what I've been thinking about, and that's where I'd like to see this kind of go. So that's kind of a sideways issue for, it's certainly not necessarily something Mr. Merrill needs to respond to tonight by any means, but since you brought that up, that was, that's been on my mind the last couple of times we've talked about affordable housing. It's just making clear that it's acceptable to do another project at another time in another location, in my mind, because I recognize not every developer does affordable housing, and if you're not skilled at it, and if you don't do it day in, day out, you may not be able to do it well at all, and it could end up failing catastro, catastrophically, which is not what we want. We don't want to burden developers financially, and, you know, that's not the purpose of this. The purpose of this is to address a serious concern and need in our community, but we want to address that concern efficiently and effectively, and ultimately, if we build up a trust fund, you know, we have millions of dollars available, or hundreds of thousands of dollars available, then, you know, the city can then be much more proactive in, in directly combating what we perceive as the issue of affordable housing. But that, that's, that's all I wanted to say, is that in my mind, you know, whether it's built into our changes or the developer proposes it, I'm always going to be open to setting aside money or doing something so that they can do affordable housing, just not at that site. So I've said the same thing now eight times, I think that's enough, but that, that's the point that I wanted to make, thank you.
But you got to say everything three times.
You did, you did, you did, you're, you're an attorney, and in order to convince the jury of any matter, and I, I say this to my teachers, you, you, it's okay to repeat things, we comprehend it better once, when it's repeated, the more it's stated. So at any rate, I, I concur with all of your sentiments as, as stated multiple times, but I do concur sincerely, I concur, and that's along the lines of what I'm thinking. We certainly don't want anyone to assume that they have to include it in their particular project. Where, in, you know, there are, the many things that Jim Morris sent us last week, there was a long menu of things for us to read and ways to, to consider this. We do have a long way to go, and we apologize to this project for having to appear before us at this early stage in our evolution, but this is an important part of our evolution and a step that frankly, we wish we had taken, you know, 12, 18 months ago, at least, but it's, it is where we are, and, and so you guys are charged with some sort of task of you in determining what it means and then somehow having that to be agreeable to, to this body, and I know that may be a tall order.
I've got a question for Bob on this one. So, Bob, aren't we kind of required to do a study and do some valuation of what the, you know, like this, I'm not sure this one adds any value to that property because there's going to be less, there'll be more units, but they're going to be smaller. So to me, it seemed like it was a request to do something that would be sellable in our market, not necessarily to add units. So I don't, like, oh, I thought we had to go through and say, okay, what you're requesting, had to go on scrape zoning, was worth this much, but since you're asking for these additional things, you know, there, that, that results in an extra, you know, $500,000 worth of, worth of revenue to you, or, you know, with a 10%, you get $50,000 worth of profit, we want you to donate, you know, 10% of that, $5,000 to the trust fund. Then we have to do, I mean, I thought this kind of ran like impact fees, where you had to have, you know, some evidence behind what it was that you were trying to implement, unless we went with kind of this, what I thought we were doing last meeting was this sort of open-ended thing where we wanted people to come to us and say, because whoever comes and offers something, you know, that's going to set the precedent for all the other people who come behind them. But I, you know, Bob, help me out here, is this, it can't be arbitrary, right?
And microphone.
Thank you. So, yes, certainly nothing that the commission would adopt could be arbitrary. In this case, though, and I want you to separate out, you know, the items before you now and the PD adoption, which is your next item, but if we're discussing the PD at this moment, you know, that is a function of essentially an agreement between the parties to allow them greater density. So if the question is whether you can consider affordable housing as part of that adoption, you certainly can, and that would be a factor which would be expressly adopted under your pending ordinance. The question before you right now, at this moment, however, deals with your comprehensive, comprehensive plan. So Commissioner Gillan, I don't, I don't know if I've answered your question entirely on the PD, but the, the point there is that, that the PD requirements are voluntary and not mandatory.
Yeah.
And so in terms of whether we have to do a study, it's not legally required in order to enter into the PD agreement. If you had mandatory requirements, you would certainly want to have a study to avoid any allegations that your requirements are arbitrary. So that, that's the PD, the laws as, as it regards to the PD for affordable housing.
Right, Bob, I think we're all in the same place, we're not, we're not intending to present a ordinance revision at this point for any requirement, but the suggestion is that the applicant for the PD, he has an opportunity to negotiate something if he's willing to voluntarily commit to some improvements. If we move forward to develop a, a code that requires a contribution of some kind, then we would need a study probably to determine exactly what that, that is we're asking and to make it valid in, in that sense.
So I, I threw out some numbers at an attorney, and he said, you got to be real careful about that because if you can't back him up with a study, then you're going to get yourself in some legal trouble.
Yeah.
So I'm just, I want to make sure that as we, as we move forward, because we all want to go forward with, with this, and I, I don't think we're going to have any of these developments where they're going to do affordable housing as a percentage of their units, unless it's something like the Atlantic Housing Partnership over on Clyde Morris, where, you know, that's, that's their business, it's what they do. You know, I think that we're going to see most people in, in things like this, you know, will be some sort of contribution, you know, but I, you know, we just, we're moving very fast, I just want to make sure that we're thinking of all the consequences and the requirements that we have to meet as we move forward. You know, at this point, to me, I think it's just voluntary for them to come forward with a proposal to say, you know, we're not going to, you know, we, we can't afford to do anything, this project wasn't contemplated that way, you know, unfortunately, the, the market can't sustain that, you know, that might be what they have come back and say. I mean, we, the, it was, the, the item was the consideration of affordable housing, you know, how to help us with the affordable housing problem. Now, hopefully, that won't be the answer, but, you know, if somebody comes back with, say, an X number of dollars per unit in apartments, or, you know, something higher for townhouses and something higher for single family, you know, and we sort of fall into a model there that's been driven by precedent and what the developers can comfortably build into their project, because they're taking a lot of risk on these things, there's, there's many, many millions of dollars, this is probably, you know, a, what, an eight, an eight-figure project when you get to the end of the day, and the developer's taking all that risk, all of a sudden, we try and throw something too much on it, you know, the, the project gets too risky for the developer. So I guess that I just want to make sure we, I don't want us to, I want us to stay on the path, I just think we need to be considerate of the folks that have already invested a lot of money in these things, that have been in the pipe for a long time, and also making sure we don't do something that gets us into some legal issues, you know, if we, if we do something that's, that's arbitrary, where we're dictating dollar amounts instead of, you know, until we have a study, and then on the back end, you know, let, let, be more voluntary, you know, for what the, you know, what the folks that are taking the risk are going to, you know, can, can withstand.
Also, we keep using the phrase, "community improvements," and I'm in support of that. To me, it doesn't necessarily have to be housing, housing is definitely a priority, but even improving the surrounding environment will improve the housing conditions and the general welfare and well-being of the people in any particular communities. So I, I've heard the word "community improvement" used twice this evening, and I like the sound of that also because maybe not everybody could afford to do something with housing. I like the idea of a trust fund, but again, community improvement is a nice, something nice that I think some of us could use in some of the zones.
Mr. Mayor, my, my understanding, and if the attorney can correct me, is right now it's purely, all of our, anytime they ask for an exception, they're supposed to show a public benefit or a public good. What we've done is ask that they show a, a public benefit or a public good in the area of affordable housing, and we've given them really no guidance except to say, we'll consider it on a case-by-case basis. Now, is that, is that essentially correct, Mr. Jagger?
That's essentially correct. Affordable housing would be one of many factors that you consider in adopting PDs.
And now, if we say that you have to do affordable housing, then that becomes a regulatory, like a taking, can I use that word, is that the correct word to use? And then we have to offer compensation?
If it's mandatory, yes, it would become essentially an exaction, what they call an exaction, for which you would have to offset costs of developer under state law and federal law.
Okay, and so in other states, I think Massachusetts and other cities, cities in Massachusetts and other parts of the country, they do something where they require a certain amount be set aside earmarked, a certain amount of money in some proportion to the project's budget or the cost of the housing be earmarked and put into a fund, and then, say, they put $50,000 into the fund, they get a tax incentive of a commensurate amount, and that would be kind of what would be required. Is that what you're saying? If we made it an exaction, that we would have to offer some kind of, we would have to give them a, a benefit back for the amount of the, the taking or the, the affordable housing that we're requiring them to build?
That's essentially correct. The statute doesn't provide a lot of guidance, but as an example, they would, the statute mentions density bonuses in exchange for their cost of providing affordable housing.
Okay, so, so that's really the, the key difference between, there, there's a price tag that goes with mandating affordable housing, that's why, I don't know if that's why, but that's one of the reasons that we're suggesting it right now, is just being a, an aspirational but guiding prong. I mean, that's something I think that, you know, Mr. Mayor, we, again, probably a different day, really need to talk about whether we just go ahead and say, you know, here's, here's, here's what we, here's an amount, and, you know, either do it as a, you know, something where the city gives incentives, or at the very least, offer some, you know, some kind of suggestion or guidance, because I, I don't know if it's the study that's required or what, but I, I share Commissioner Gillan's, what I, what I guess his concerns are, is that it's, it's very amorphous, and if you're a business coming to do, or then you'd like to do business in Daytona as a developer, you're not necessarily going to get any real guidance on what the commission might accept until you, I mean, I guess, come before us at some point, or, I mean, I don't know when they would get the input from the commission, maybe along the way, but I don't know that they would even get, you know, an actual input till they get to this stage, which seems kind of late in the game. So, I mean, I think that that's actually one of the reasons why having some, some requirement might, might be helpful. I know it's, there's a lot of other reasons, and I'm not proposing that tonight, but I'm saying, I, I think maybe Commissioner Gillan, maybe some of your concern is that it's, we're not giving enough guidance, so it becomes, you know, just the potential for disparate treatment, the potential for allegations that we're, you know, treating people completely differently exists, and I don't like that, I certainly don't want to send out that message. I, I don't want to send out a message that it's hard to do business in Daytona, I don't want to send out a message that we're, you know, anti-growth, anti-responsible growth, anti-responsible development, because I don't think that we are. So I, I just want to make sure that if we're asking this of developers, that we help them as much as possible come up with, or give them some sense of what our, our guidelines may be, because I think it's a, you know, it's, it's a, we're asked, I mean, obviously, they're asking us to give them something. It's not unreasonable for, for us to ask for something in return. I, I get that, and I know that's how it's been done for many, many years, and will continue to be done, but I think that if we have some guidance, some earmarks, some, you know, recommendations, that that would make me feel a lot better, that we're giving a clear signal to developers of the kinds of things that we're thinking about, and, you know, future commissions can revisit those guidelines, or they may find them helpful. I just think it'd be helpful for me in evaluating a project to have some sense of what, what is meaningful, what is useful, what, what do we want out of the affordable housing component of this? And since we're not doing a strict requirement, I mean, we could, I suppose, say, 10% of your building costs, or the cost of three of your least expensive units, I mean, we could, we could require something and give very strict requirements and earmark and benchmark so that they know exactly what would be required, and we're not doing that because we're not imposing at this point a, a requirement. But again, I think it would be very helpful, and I would feel more comfortable if there was a way of giving some guidance to them. Now, I don't know, are there, you know, in, when you read, you know, the laws or rules, sometimes there's commentary on them to give you insight into what the drafters were thinking, or what the committee that proposed a rule was thinking, and they're not, you know, they're not binding, but they're, you know, persuasive, or they help you in interpreting it. Are, is there any equivalent like that in the area that we're in? Mr. Jagger, is there any way that if we wanted to, if the majority of the commission wanted to, we could kind of give some guidance or at least declare what in 2020 we, we think might be a meaningful contribution in the realm of affordable housing, or as Commissioner May was talking about, like, community improvement or things like that? Is there a way for us to leave some kind of guidance, or is that just, A, a problem not best left to, you know, be decided on a case-by-case basis, or B, just not doable or feasible for legal reasons, or C, just not what the majority of the commission wants? Thank you.
If I could just answer that briefly, so the stat, the scheme that we've set up here in your ordinances is for this to be on a case-by-case basis, so every project conceivably would have a variety of community benefits for you to consider in adopting or, or rejecting a proposed PD. Staff could certainly be tasked, which the mayor has suggested, with creating some sort of standards or guidelines for what would be a, in a, a reasonable affordable housing benefit to be considered, but keeping in mind, every project is different, there could be mixed-use projects, which would be economic drivers as well as affordable housing drivers, and all that would be for your consideration among all of the factors that you are allowed to consider as part of your PD approval. So, again, this is not a mandatory program, it's a voluntary program, and essentially, it's a negotiated agreement for the PD zoning.
Okay, any other comments, Commissioner?
Yeah, have there been, are there other cities in Florida that have this aspirational, voluntary, not compulsory language, and, you know, is there anyone doing anything different that might offer some solution to the problem that I have talked about? And maybe no one else sees that, maybe everyone thinks that it's, you know, best left to do it on a case-by-case basis. I'm just interested to see if there's any other cities that can offer us some, some guidance in, in how they're handling it, and, you know, I don't know if there's other cities that have compulsory requirements, or if, if other people do it the way that we're proposing. You know, I don't know if that's the kind of study that Commissioner Gillan was talking about as far as, you know, I'm just not sure. about as far as, you know, I'm just not sure. But I, do you know, Mr. Jagger, if there's other cities that are doing something along this line, that are done something, have given more guidance, or are there other cities in Florida that are requiring affordable housing as a component of any PD?
Yeah, I can tell you that the, this new requirement, the amendment to the Florida statutes, which requires local governments to offset the cost of affordable housing, that's new. So all the jurisdictions throughout the state are really trying to come into compliance with that, mostly by abandoning their mandatory affordable housing requirements in order to avoid having to offset those costs in one way or another. So it is a relatively new concept that the governments are dealing with now, so there isn't a lot of guidance from other jurisdictions. There's certainly no case law interpreting the new statute at this point. I think the best advice I could give to you now is to proceed with a voluntary program until such time as a study is done, and perhaps there is further guidance through case law on a mandatory program.
What, I'm sorry to interrupt. What, when you say "study," maybe I'm missing the, what would we be studying exactly? I'm not sure I follow.
So, for example, the statute says that you can offset the developer's cost by providing density bonuses. Well, we don't really know what a density bonus is worth unless you have a study. Likewise, you don't really know what your affordable housing cost is to the developer unless you have a study. So the study can provide a lot of information in terms of what your needs are and how to offset those, and how to value those costs for purposes of offsetting. At this point, yeah, I don't, it would be hard to say, without being arbitrary, what the value of an affordable housing unit is unless you have a study. And that's why, at this point, being voluntary, it's something that the parties can research on their own, they can make a recommendation to you through staff and through the developers to what they feel would be reasonable, given the size and scope of the development and the amount of new residential housing that's being provided.
Mr. Chisholm, to your knowledge, do we have any, any studies that have some of this data available to us? Did we get them in any other way when we did the workforce housing studies or anything like that? Is there, is there any data that we can co-op from other investigations? Or do we really, do we need to do a study from scratch? And do you have any idea what would be entailed, like how long that would take, and an idea of what it would cost if we had to do a study from scratch, just based on other similar scope studies that we've done before?
You know, I don't think, I don't think we have a study that's been done of magnitude that we're talking about now. And I think there's data and information available through several CDBG efforts that would be helpful, but not, I think if we're going to do this, the right thing to do is to, is to develop the scope and make sure we have the scope contain those issues we want to, want to put into the program, and then look at what its impact is on the community, and what is the, what is the need as it relates to our objectives.
I found, I was sent something from an August 27, 2020 meeting in the city of Pensacola, and their council has, has this in front of them, and they laid out a task force report from Pensacola. Obviously, the differences between us and Pensacola. I will, if anyone's interested, I'll forward this to the clerk, and she can disseminate it later, however is appropriate, to the Sunshine Committee, through the Sunshine Laws, rather, and so that people can take a look at this and see if it, if they find it helpful at all. But, I mean, is it, is it something that, I mean, Mr. Mayor, given your, this is a priority for you, and I've heard you speak on it many times, as being one of your main priorities right now, you know, are we moving towards getting a study done? Or is that in the works? Because I think that that's something that we really need to do so that developers who are looking to do business with us can get a sense of, of, you know, the answer to some of these questions, like what they might be, what might be a good offer, what might be a good incentive, what, something we might entertain, what we might find of value, rather than just kind of shooting blindly, or in good faith overstating or understating the magnitude of the problem or the contribution required. You know, obviously, money probably goes further here than it does in other parts of the state, but the opposite is true. There may be, you know, problems that are more unique to our part of Florida. So, you know, given how important this is to all of us, you know, and, you know, I think a study is probably something that we should get started with, if it's not already underway, so that we can get guidance not only to our, to ourselves, but have something available for the businesses that come in front of us, because I want them to be able to make, you know, really good proposals, and I want them to have all the information that they need, and I don't want them to have, you know, spend money of their own, kind of trying to guess what we might like, or what might suit Daytona, if we can have that information available, not just for our own edification, but also for the benefit of the people looking to do business with the city. Again, this may not be the time in the evening to bring this up, and it may not be probably procedurally correct to do it, but, you know, I think Commissioner Gilliland's right, we probably do need to have a study. I don't know if he was asking for one, or just suggesting it, or I don't remember exactly how he brought it up, but if he was suggesting that we need to do one, I would join with him in that, because I think we really need good, objective data. And then, once we have that data, then we'll be in a position to talk about whether we, you know, have a requirement, or if we continue to make it aspirational, or if we leave it aspirational, give really good suggestions. You know, like tipping is a suggestion, but there's also custom and, you know, kind of a standard that a lot of people abide by. So, you know, we can have it be optional and customary, but we can still give hard guidance on, you know, what, what we like, or what we think would be appropriate. So I'll bring that up again if it's appropriate later in the evening, but I think a study would be very helpful.
Well, I want to go ahead and interject, although we need to get through the item, but I do want to interject and say that it is on my list to say that we need to do a study, you know, as quickly as possible. We need to engage. A study is necessary, and in part because, you know, I met with another developer earlier this evening, and this very topic came up. You know, and the one thing, and you've illustrated this, and it is true, we don't want to thwart development, and we don't want the development community to be uncertain or feel that we are an ambiguous community about whether we want them in our community. And when your rules and your protocols and procedures are not as clearly defined as they should be, you run that risk. And I recognize that, you know, this whole process is not comfortable, but we have to grow through this because, one, we're worthy of this. You know, our community is worthy of this. They, this is something that the community requires, needs, and, you know, we're charged with being good stewards of the community's resources. And so, you know, whatever it takes to get to a point where, you know, I'm not opposed, I would like to see us get to an exaction, to where we have exactions as a part of this process. But in order to get there, we're going to have to have, at some point, a study. I'm also in favor of not having areas in our community where there are no designated density requirements. They enable us to have some understanding of what our value is. If you have a density standard, then you know what is, what the value of that is. And that's one of the reasons why we're able to request something tonight, is because we have a standard. And they are asking to go outside of that standard. And it is reasonable and prudent on our part to say that in order to do that, then there is a requirement. And since we don't have that clearly defined, and we can't, all seven of us, engage with them and come back with something that's reasonable, we have to leave that to our staff, who I expect to do as good a job in this area as they did when they brought us a deal for One Daytona, a deal for Tanger, Trader Joe's, Brown and Brown. These were the, B. Braun, these were the types of complex, tough negotiating processes that required the negotiation and skill of a very skilled and highly capable staff. They didn't just happen, you know, you know, at the dais. Certainly, we set up certain protocol and a charge, but we didn't allow staff to do what they needed to do. And so, since these are the rules that we have to operate under at this time, that is where I would like for us to leave it with the staff and this applicant, and see if they can come back with something that is, that is reasonable to help us to achieve a goal. And I don't disagree with Commissioner May's assessment that a public benefit is important, and there may be a time that something comes before this commission that we say, "We don't, affordable," or "workforce," which is a better word. We need to move towards that word as opposed to "affordable." Workforce is the word we need to use. But there may come a time when something offers another benefit to the community, you know, that is not associated with workforce. But I'm stating, and I think most of us have agreed, that workforce has to be among our greatest priorities, and I've heard that over and over tonight. So I feel confident in saying that that's a priority that we will move forward with, and the expectation at this time.
I have a question. Where does this leave Mr. Merrill this evening? So what is, what does Mr., what is his kind of scope right now? What do they have to do?
They, one, we have to vote on it, which means we affirm it, move it forward. Then they have to engage in a dialogue with the staff that, staff can recommend and say that this will help us to achieve your stated goal of affordable housing, or whatever other benefit they believe is reasonable to this.
Provided staff has evidence to back up that recommendation, because...
They don't have to have the evidence that you're suggesting, because he stated that we're giving them a benefit, that they could just go and develop this property without that benefit. So they don't have to prove anything, from my understanding of what Attorney Jagger said, and I don't mean to interrupt you, but they, that's, they don't have to prove anything.
But they're going with smaller units, and I think the overall, didn't you say that the total square footage of the building is less than what it would be?
So to keep in mind what we're talking about in context, this is a comprehensive plan amendment, agenda item that we're talking about now. I know we've gone off to the PD, which is two items later. This particular item has to do with, building being smaller, the floor area ratio being lessened and limited, and the units being increased. So it's a give and take already, happening right there. So we're not going to build as big of a building, and we're going to build a product that has smaller units by design, so there'll be more of them.
Right. So it's a market-driven thing. There's not, the benefit that you're talking about is only one side of the argument. The other side of the argument is, they can't sell the bigger, expensive units, they're doing smaller, less expensive units. So it wipes out.
That's, that's, that's when someone gives you something that you may not value in the same way that they do. So...
So you want to pull the project?
I don't miss, I'm not pulling the project, I didn't say anything like that. Said nothing like that. All I said was, and I think we've agreed tonight, that they have an opportunity to come back and work with our staff to present something. All I'm saying is that, that's not apples to the apples, from my perspective.
Have you had any conversations with the manager, with staff, about what you think those dollars should, dollar amounts should be?
Have I?
Yeah.
No, I have not.
Okay.
No, I have not.
This is all voluntary at this point.
Right.
It's a voluntary exercise. We're going to, we're going to talk with them as a result of this conversation tonight, and we'll certainly report back what, you know, where it's at.
And I haven't had any of those conversations either, but it's, I mean, we're, we went from stationary to running, and, you know, there's a lot of things that have to catch up, and this is, this is an important one.
It is. Okay. Do we have any other comments? We have a motion and a second. Any comments?
No, sir.
Hearing none. All in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 7-0.
The public hearing is set for November 18.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number 9G, this was the item that was added tonight. Public Works Technical Services Preliminary and Final Plat for Tamoka Town Center Parcel A. This is a resolution, quasi-judicial hearing. A resolution approving the preliminary and final plat for Tamoka Town Center Parcel A replat, a commercial subdivision of 23.76, 76 plus or minus acres of land located west of Cornerstone Boulevard and east of I-95, authorizing the city manager to sign the final plat and permit recordation there upon meeting certain conditions precedent and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second.
And I do have Charlie Parter here on behalf of the applicant.
All right. Any questions of Charlie? Okay, no questions. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries, 7-0.
Okay. We'll now move on to item number 10, which is our administrative items. Item number 10A is the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division Silver Hills PD rezoning. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezone 3.9 plus or minus acres of property generally located on the east and west sides of North Atlantic Avenue, south of Gulf Boulevard, and north of Driftwood Avenue, from T1 tourist accommodations zoning to PDG Plan Development General. Approving the Silver Hills Plan District Agreement, authorizing development of the property with multifamily, hotel, motel, recreational entertainment, eating and drinking establishment, and parking uses, subject to conditions. Authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We have any questions or comments?
And I do have Mr. Merrill here for any questions.
All right, Mr. Merrill. No questions for Mr. Merrill. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 7-0.
The public hearing is set for November 18.
Thank you.
Okay. And move on to item 10B, which is the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division LPGA Medical Center PD rezoning. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezone 7.3 plus or minus acres of property generally located on the south side of LPGA Boulevard, approximately 1,700 feet west of Jimmy Ann Drive, from M3 General Industry to PDG Plan Development General. Approving the LPGA Medical Center Plan District Agreement, authorizing development of the property with various non-residential uses, including medical dental office and dwellings, upper story only, subject to conditions. Authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Gilliland, I mean, from Commissioner Traeger, and a second from Commissioner Gilliland. Do we have any questions or comments? No questions, no comments. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 7-0.
The public hearing is set for October 7. We'll now move on to item 10C. It's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, First Amendment to O'Connor Capital Plan District PD Agreement, and Approval of Cotages of Daytona Preliminary Plat. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance approving the First Amendment to O'Connor Capital Plan District Agreement, authorizing a portion of the planned district property consisting of 29.7 plus or minus acres generally located on the west side of North Williamson Boulevard and south of Strickland Range Road to be developed as a multifamily use with up to 282 dwelling units, subject to conditions. Approving the Cotages of Daytona Preliminary Plat for the property referenced above, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the First Amendment, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or comments?
I do have a question. I saw some pictures of this project, and I thought it was really, really well done. So in this case, like, what are the sizes? Like, what are we looking at? Because it looks like a charming place to live, actually.
Good evening, Commissioner May. Mayor and Commissioners, Michael Schnaps Tyler with Cobb Cole, 149 South Ridgewood Avenue on behalf of the applicant. These are standard residential homes. They're not tiny homes. They're standard size. They meet the minimum size in your code. They range, you know, 1,000 square feet to 1,400 square feet. They range, you know, 1,000 square feet to 1,400 square feet. The architecture is just fantastic. I can, I can comment second reading with some more materials that show the architecture. But they meet your architectural standards. There's no waivers at all from your standards. It's a, it's a really sharp product and really excited to bring it to this community.
Thank you.
I'm excited about it also because I believe that it's, it's, it's on a scale of what we need in terms of pricing. And it gives us a new product to our community, you know, that will, that a teacher or a police officer might be able to afford. No?
You know the prices on them?
A lot more than I thought. Okay.
I'm excited about the project. I think I've looked it over. I've spoken to Mr. Michael. And I did express to him that I thought the prices were a little high in terms of that area and that community. They're offering a lot with this product. It's going to be all-inclusive and smart homes. So I do see the benefit of, of the pricing. But I still felt it was a little high.
A lot of that range, okay. Well, I meant what I'm too.
One to $3,000 is a little high to me.
If I may briefly respond, I don't have the exact pricing. I know it's going to start in the low 1,000s. I don't believe it's over $3,000 per unit. I'll check with the client. This is just first, first reading. But I do just want to note, you know, this is an existing PD that's being amended. As the mayor noted, this is a new product for this community. And so the changes that are being done are not to the actual use, but it's to the design standards. There's no increase in density. There's no new amount of units that are being put out here. But we're creating essentially a new product type for the community. And I think it's one that, that, you know, for a rental community is exciting that you're getting a home. You're getting a neighborhood. You're getting open space. You're getting sidewalks. You're getting internet in your homes and washers and dryers, the types of things that, you know, all families need for their homes.
I haven't met with you. I thought it was a very neat product to have in the community. And the first, first in our market for certain, so I'm supportive.
As, as I'm reading through this here, and Attorney Jagger and I went through this, I asked, you know, what is the average size? And we saw, I see here a maximum of 1,000 square feet. But then I also see one bedrooms at 450, two bedrooms at 550, and three bedrooms 700 square feet. Is that about right, what we discussed? So what we saw?
I'll let Mr. Schnapps talk.
These are the mitting, the minimum living area dwelling units under your code. We just repeated the minimum dwelling size from the code so that we're not creating a waiver.
Yeah.
But the site plan is in. It's going to the planning board hopefully, you know, next month. And the units are all well over that size.
No, I think it's a fantastic size. That's what I'm commenting on. I think it's great because not everybody needs a lot of space. If you're single, you have no pets, you have no kids, but you don't want to live in an apartment. This is a nice alternative for you. You don't need that, you don't need a lot of space anymore. People are really downsizing. Single people are downsizing. So thank you.
I thought it was unique. Nice for us to start to kick this off.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
The public hearing is set for October 7th. Moving on to item 10D. It's the City Manager's Office Historic Preservation Board Appointments Resolution. A resolution appointing four members of Historic Preservation Board for three-year terms and providing an effective date. Ms. Betty Goodman to report.
Good evening. This agenda item is to appoint four members to Historic Preservation Board. The terms of Dallas Peacock Zone 3 and Robert Fort Zone 5 have expired, and both would like to be reappointed. There are two additional openings, the At Large position and Zone 4. Tracy Remark has applied for that Large position. And Delia Kremel has applied for the Zone 4 position. Zone 3, Commissioner May?
I approve them.
Are we gonna do these separate?
No, just tell us each one that they want, and then Commissioner Gilliland will recommend the slate for us.
All right. Zone 5, Commissioner Henry. Zone 4, Commissioner Gilliland. And At Large?
Ms. Tracy Remark? Yes.
Motion to nominate Tracy Remark for At Large for the mayor.
Okay. So someone gonna do all?
Oh, you gotta do all of them.
So all right, that one and Delia Kremel for Zone 4, Robert Fort for Zone 5, and Dallas Peacock for Zone 3.
All second.
All right. Second from cyberspace. Okay. We have a motion, got a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Moving on to item 10E. It is City Manager's Office Downtown Development Authority Appointments Resolution. A resolution appointing two members to the Downtown Development Authority for three-year terms ending June 30th, 2023, providing an effective date. Ms. Betty Goodman to report.
This agenda item is to appoint two members to the Downtown Development Authority. The membership terms of Cheryl Cook and Michael Snapstaller have expired, and both would like to be reappointed. We have no additional qualifying applicants. May we have a nomination?
Motion to reappoint Cheryl Cook and Michael Snapstaller.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. And I dare say we have two very talented and committed members of our community serving in these capacities. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Moving on to our final item of the evening is the Discussion Action Item, Establishing a Procedure for the Appointment to the Citizens Police Review Board.
Okay, this agenda item is to discuss and hopefully establish a procedure to appoint members to the Citizens Police Review Board. It was voted upon by the commission that the board would consist of seven members, two which would have specialized training in the electors of the city or have a place of business in the city. Five members to be qualified electors of the city, but not necessarily have specialized training. Additionally, there would be one non-voting advisor. There are 46 applicants. Thirty-three of the applicants indicate that they have the specialized training. And all except for one are electors of the city. Therefore, those that are not selected for the two specialized positions also qualify for the other five positions. So I did speak with four other municipalities that have had this board for some time to kind of see how they went about appointing members. I talked with the city of Houston. They have 29 members on their board and all of mayoral recommendations appointed by the commission. I spoke with the city of Orlando. They have nine members. They have a recommendation committee for all of their boards that present recommendations. But for this particular board, all nine of their members are mayoral recommendations. Then I spoke with the city of Tampa. They have 11 members on their board. Five are appointed by the mayor. And six are appointed by the remainder of the council. Okay? In the city of Ormond, there are five members. Each commissioner and mayor appoint one person. So what staff did was we have two recommendations. Our first recommendation for your consideration is, since there are seven members that you agreed upon to serve on this board, and there are seven of you, the recommendation would be for each of you to appoint a person.
To recommend. To recommend appointment.
To recommend for appointment. And that recommendation would not necessarily have to be from your zone. Okay? And then the mayor would recommend the non-voting advisor. Okay, so.
Can you repeat that one again?
Okay, there are seven voting members, and there are seven of you. So each of you would recommend for appointment one person. He would get, yes. He would get a voting member and then recommend the advisor who is non-voting. Okay, option two is a little bit more convoluted. So as you know, there are 46 applicants. Thirty-three that stated that they have experience. So we, some kind of way, need to get that number down to a workable number. So for the expert position, the recommendation would be for each of you to provide one name. That would equal seven, because there's seven of you. And then at the next meeting, not meeting, after you provide your names, then we would have a ballot, and then each of you would vote for two people. And then the two that have the highest number would be appointed. So you remember how we do when we have a ballot? Like, if we have four appointments, but eight people, you get a ballot and you vote for the four people. And then the four with the highest are the four that's appointed. Okay, so for the next part, for the five members, each of you would nominate, not nominate, recommend two people or three, whichever you prefer. And then you would get at the following meeting, a ballot and vote for five people. And then the five with the highest number would be the five to be appointed. You following? Okay. Okay, so that's our recommendation.
I have a question. With the non, the recommendation for the non-voting person, right? That is, we all put in our say, is that correct? Or is that the mayor's say for the non?
That's the mayor. That's the advisor. And that person, as you say, is non-voting. They are just there to answer questions and to, for the committee.
So the, that same position, do we know if any of the 33 have that particular type of training that we're looking for? And, you know, Chief, help me out here. It was some sort of, of training that we were talking about when we, through the deliberations, that this would be an expert that could help the board members who don't have that type of police training to be able to look through the IA case and make a determination whether or not the, you know, they, it wasn't somebody who was just in the military. It was somebody who had very specialized police training. So the 33 people here don't have that.
There, if I remember correctly, I think there were a couple that were police officers from other municipalities.
Some of them may, but.
FBI guy.
Yeah, there were quite, there's some people with a lot of extended experience.
I thought there was some sort of state kind of sanctioned training or certification or licensing to actually be able to give certain trainings. Am I correct?
That was not a requirement, though.
For the.
For the advisor.
For the advisor, it was somebody that, I mean, we really were looking for somebody that was a former police officer that had gone through extensive training, you know, to be able to help, you know, decipher what, you know, this volumes of information they get out of the IA, you know, office. I mean, it wasn't just somebody who had been in the military.
There are some people in there that have been police officers. And that stack.
I didn't know it had to be a police officer.
No, it didn't say that.
See, and so the state licensure, because I spoke with somebody also, they're not a police officer. They're just, but they've gone through the training, the firearms training, the safety training, all of the, there's a whole regulatory area. Is that correct? Am I thinking correctly there, Chief Capri? I don't know. Sorry.
Well, for the advisor, it didn't say that they had to have a particular, help me out here, Bob, a particular kind of training. But if they're going to be an advisor, they would need to have training in certain areas. And as I said, I don't know, did any of you, did you get a chance to look at the applications?
I saw there are several of them in there that I'm very confident would be good advisors based on their.
But I think the list is, the list is not 33 people. The list is much smaller than that for the, for the people that are qualified to be the advisor.
Yeah. I would, I don't know what, we didn't write down a qualification, but I guess I would concur with that. Because there's, there was, but there's, you know, seven, eight of them, I think, that could advise this group that I read, you know, so.
Well, it wasn't a special list made for people for advisor. It was a list of people that had the training that all of you said that the specialized people should have.
And it was, so that wasn't necessarily training. That was background. You know, a background in criminal justice or military law enforcement, you know. But the training was somebody that really could be, you know, kind of more of an expert in, you know, police procedure.
We did not say that, though.
If we go back to the minutes, that's, I know we talked about this.
We did, but we didn't say they had to have training in police procedure. But we got some police on there. You have, but I don't want them necessarily to be a policeman, to be advising. That's not really necessary to me. I need a, you know.
There's somebody on this list that was, that was former military that I think would be great in that position. And I think he'd be qualified as well. But, you know, I don't know what other people have that's, you know, I mean, looking through the, the applications, you know, I didn't, I didn't do a chart, you know, and check off the boxes and say, you know, people that really met that sort of higher level of, of experience that, you know, I think would make them appropriate for the advisor position. But I think this person would be a good voting member, too. So I'm a little torn.
What the ordinance says is the city commission shall appoint a board advisor who has experience or training in law enforcement to assist the board in deliberation. The board advisor should not be an employee of the city or a member of the board, and shall serve without compensation.
Oh, okay.
That's all it says.
So we can meet that criteria. Got plenty of people on there that fully meet that.
Training, experience? I mean, you had to be experienced to be trained in it.
Okay.
But we ended up with a lot more people with the background than I thought we were going to. I mean, so we, we could easily end up with seven people with.
Oh, yeah.
You know. But I, if it was more a layperson, then I think that that advisor position is a more important role about having that expertise. You know, personally, I hope we do end up with seven people off the list of 33. So actually, eight if we're gonna take one for the advisor, too.
Okay. How are we gonna select them? We got one of two options.
If you take the first option, you know, that's one way to do it. The second option is a little more convoluted, really.
I don't like the second option that much. It's a little bit, it's too much for me.
So the first option was we each point one, and you make the recommendation for the, sorry, we each make a recommendation, you know, put forth for approval.
Yes.
I don't want to get admonished like Betty did, so. And then, but I'm fine with you making the, you know, making a selection from the remainder as the, you know, the expert. I mean, I think we're thinking about this the same way.
Okay, are you all agreeable to the first option? Yeah, I think that's clean. She's happy about that. That's the reason. Okay, do we have a motion to that end? We need a motion?
Yes, you should probably take a motion and also public comment for establishing your procedure.
Nope, we got John.
I got John.
I move that for selecting our members of the police review board, that each commissioner would, that each person on the commission would select one, and that the mayor would select the advisor.
Okay. All right, I got a motion, I have a second. Okay, all those in favor, let it, duh, duh, I'm sorry, Mr. Nicholson?
I have one speaker, Mr. John Nicholson.
Unless, unless he's left to go out and walk the neighborhood.
Come on in, is it, oh.
Locked up.
Is he the only one out there?
Yep, he's the only one, probably.
John Nicholson, 413 North Grandview Avenue. I understand you're selecting one person apiece. It says here, seven members appointed by this commission to the extent the board shall reflect the racial, ethnic, and cultural diversity of the city. How are you going to apply that? You know, what do you mean by cultural? What do you mean by ethnic? These are all definitive terms that you're asked to meet. And so do each one of you meet that? You're not going to be able to do that. So you're creating a board that will not reflect the city as a whole. So if you define the terms, the chances are great that you're not going to end up with what you had originally planned on doing. Thank you.
So John, Johnson, so you know who we appointed, who, who did I appoint?
No, I'm just saying, when you appoint individually, how do you determine the diversity? How do you determine ethnic? How do you determine cultural? What may mean cultural to you may not mean the same thing to a Ruth.
Yeah, okay. What we're, what we're after in that is a diverse board that sort of resembles to the best of our ability the city of Daytona Beach. And we will do the best job that we can to make sure that you're proud of the people that we selected. And if you're not, they'll still look like the city.
It has nothing to do with their qualification.
No, it didn't say qualification.
You can't predetermine what another commissioner is going to appoint.
We can talk about it, we have, we'll talk about it.
Okay.
But we'll have a board that's diverse.
All right.
That's what we're looking for. We have great candidates.
That was my only speaker.
Oh, okay. Is that his only speaker? Okay, we have, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The motion carries, seven, zero.
That was our final item on the agenda.
Oh gee, okay. We are at the commission comments. Commissioner Reed?
Yes, sir, I don't have anything to say other than I just hope that our next meeting is, is brief because it's my birthday.
I can't promise you where things have been going, but we won't be here till midnight.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Traeger?
Okay, you're not that lucky, all right.
Commissioner in Cyberland?
Is it my turn?
Yes, sir.
Okay, first, I want to start off by giving my condolences and I'm sure the condolences of everyone on the commission to Ms. Ouija Kunding and her family. She's had a loss in the family and my thoughts are with her, as I'm sure everyone would be. She serves on the code enforcement board and is a very avid participant in our city and our local politics. And I wish her and her family as much peace as they can find in this difficult and trying time. Moving on to other items, I, we talked a lot about the, my thoughts on affordable housing. And I did give, I did email Ms. La Magna a copy of the, or rather the link to the Pensacola. I'm going to go ahead and call it a study. Looks like it's minutes and an agenda item from their city commission meeting up there. So I think that would be a helpful thing for us to look at and that might be a blueprint even for what we end up having to do. The next thing that I wanted to talk about is, it's, it's come to my attention that, and this is going to be, could be a problem when we talk about recruiting and retaining great candidates, that at some point in the past, there was a decision made, I mean, I'm sure it was a necessary one at the time, that employees who were hired after nineteen ninety-nine essentially in certain job categories capped out in their pension contribution. And what that means is that once they get to a certain point, they still get money taken out of their paycheck every week or every two weeks, but they don't get a continuing benefit because of this. So each additional year of service, they get nothing extra for it and they're actually contributing money into a pension that they're not seeing any benefit of. And I'd argue that if that's in fact correct, then they're getting, they're actually probably paying taxes on a higher income than they're actually receiving and then they're losing the benefit of this money each month or each week. And some of the employees that I looked at, I mean, we're talking about losing, you know, twelve to fifteen thousand dollars a year that's being taken out of their salaries and put into this pension. And I, you know, I, I understand that there's probably things that can be done, like reducing that person's contribution, but I don't think that that's a very fair thing to do to our senior-most employees. Particularly, you know, you've got a situation where someone's devoted, you know, twenty, thirty years to working for the city and then they're not getting any pension benefit from consecutive years of service. And what has also brought this to my mind is that as we enter a period of time where we're going to need to be recruiting and hiring new talent at the high levels, you know, replacing a city manager, replacing a police chief, that will be a problem, particularly if we're looking to promote from within, because there may be some of our senior employees who are eligible for these positions who we would like to have in consideration, who are not going to be getting the benefit of some of the perks of their position. Whereas if we were to hire someone from an outside position, they would be getting that, that benefit. And so it just strikes me as unfair to the current employees who are facing that restriction. And I don't know if that restriction still makes sense for the same reasons it made when it was passed. And I, I don't know the full history of the bill, so if there's someone from staff, perhaps Mr. Sexton, I don't know, I know it's calling you out at the last minute and you certainly couldn't be prepared for this question, but if you want to get back to me at the next meeting or email or just reach out to me, that would, I'm sure, be fine. If you can take a stab at answering it now, I would love to know the answer to it. But I'd like to know, you know, how many employees?
Commissioner Delgado, can I, I think we should get Mr. Sexton up here because I've had conversations with him about this as well, because I see the same thing you do and he's actually already working on it. So he could maybe just give a little update of the activities that are currently going on. It might answer a little bit of your question.
Sure, great, thank you. Rob?
Good evening, everyone. Jim Sexton, Human Resources Director. So the pension you're talking about, Commissioner Delgado, is the Police and Fire Pension Fund. Two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, the city implemented a max benefit in the pension, so you, once you accrued that, you could accrue no higher of a benefit. And what we're looking at now is obviously every, every action has a consequence and we're looking at the unintended consequence of that is what happens, you know, eight years later now that we have some senior staff looking to get promoted into higher level positions and they're at their max benefit already and they're still getting their ten percent contribution taken out of their paycheck, which is the money I believe you were talking about. They are getting the tax benefit, just to be clear on that, that it is tax-deferred money. However, I think what you're hearing is that they are paying for a benefit that they are not going to receive. So what we did is at the last pension board meeting.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Sexton. So can you just, in, so let's say their salary is fifty thousand dollars. They are contributing five thousand of that to a pension. Are they get, are they getting that five thousand in a pension and it's just not getting matched or the interest? Or are they not getting that, any benefit from that money that's being deducted?
So it's a, it's a defined benefit, defined benefit pension, so it's based on years of service and a multiplier and an average five-year compensation. The max benefit is, I think it's sixty-five thousand or sixty-nine thousand annually is the pension. So once you have your twenty-five, thirty years at a three percent multiplier, you're looking at ninety percent. If you're making seventy, eighty, ninety, eighty, or a hundred thousand, something like that, if you've made the high-level command staff, deputy chief, chief positions, it's conceivable as of right now that those folks that are having ten percent taken out of their check are not getting an additional benefit. So what we've asked the actuary to do is give us an impact statement on making a change to where, once you have attained the max benefit, that your pension contribution would either cease or be reduced to some type of, of cursory, some type of deduction where you wouldn't be paying the ten percent because you technically wouldn't be accruing a benefit. And what I'll do is I'll use the social security, social security as an example. When an employee makes one hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars annually or more than that, their six point two percent towards social security stops because they're at the max benefit under social security. We don't have that protection in our police and fire pension plan. The FRS is no worries, it does not have a max. It does, but nobody here will ever attain that. I think if you're the Florida State University coach, you might, but there's a max benefit in FRS, but it won't apply to anybody at the city of Daytona Beach. But, so we, it is something we're looking at doing. Obviously, we have some talented individuals in our command staff who actuarially have attained the max benefit. And now we're trying to get an impact statement from the actuary to see what it will cost to, to cease that contribution or to develop a lower level contribution once you have attained the max as a maintenance contribution and then bring that ordinance form to the commission to see if you guys are interested in making that change to the ordinance.
So, Mr. Sexton, so I, so I understand what you're saying is the, the people this applies to, they're getting a multiplier based on their years of service and their top five years. They're still contributing money to help fund that benefit, but whether they work another five years or ten years, or whether they make more money or less money, their benefit is not going to change.
Correct. Once, once they have the years of service and the average final compensation times their multiplier, once they have attained the max pension benefit, which is fifty-five hundred a month, they will not accrue additional pension benefits. And the, the rub right now is that they're still paying ten percent. Like if somebody's attained the max benefit, they have a salary of one hundred and ten thousand dollars for argument's sake. They're paying ten percent into a pension plan that they're not going to receive a benefit for down the road.
And how would that be? Now, if we went out and hired somebody today for a senior command position, would that stricture apply to them?
So the short answer is that the cap would apply to them. However, it would take them a minimum of ten years. At ten years, they'd be at thirty percent. It's a three percent multiplier. It's a ten-year vesting period. So if we brought in somebody off the street to be a chief, for example, they would, after ten years, they would have thirty percent earned. And if they were making a hundred thousand, just for round numbers, you know, their pension would be thirty thousand dollars a year, which would be well under the cap. But if they stayed fifteen, twenty years at a, you know, at a much higher salary, then it's conceivable they would hit a cap at some point in their career. What we're looking at is fixing, making a way like, you know, back in oh-six, oh-seven when, when we were having extreme rough time funding the pension. We got with the unions, I wasn't here at the time in eleven and twelve, I came in at the tail end, but we got with the unions, tried to figure out a way to lower our pension contribution on, on the city's behalf. And they came up with several different things. They eliminated COLA, eliminated drop, eliminated, put a max benefit on. A lot of the things we've been able to bring back, the last thing that we haven't touched and it's our biggest money saver, is the pension cap. So what we're, instead of releasing the cap, we're increasing the cap, what we're doing is then at least just ceasing the amount of money the employee would have to continue to pay for a pension. And then what they could do is take that ten percent, that would, they would no longer contribute to the police and fire pension and they literally could defer that money straight into a four fifty-seven and then on top of their defined benefit plan that the city is providing, they could then contribute into a four fifty-seven plan for the remainder of their career.
So what, well, I guess I didn't ask the question harshly. Yeah, obviously, we took someone off the street, it would take them time. But let's say we hired, you know, some police officer from Orlando, would they be in the same pension program?
No, so this is a, a designated Daytona Beach Police and Firefighter Pension Plan. It is not shared with any other police agencies throughout the state or anywhere for that matter. So if somebody did ten years, fifteen years, twenty years, whatever, retired from an Orlando or some other police department, if they come here, they're starting at year one in our pension plan.
Okay. And is that, and they have to be in the fire pension plan? They can't be in FRS?
Correct. Right now, all police and fire sworn employees are only allowed to be in the police and fire pension plan. I, actually, there, there is a waiver. If, if you're a new chief coming from the outside, not an internal promotion, but if you're a chief coming from the outside, you can waive being in the police and fire, or the police pension plan.
Let me go right into FRS?
Yes, it's kind of unclear. It just says they could waive out of that. I would assume then the city would then put them in the FRS if they decided to waive. I don't think anybody would, it's a, it's a great pension plan.
And I don't know, I mean, maybe, I, I think Commissioner Gillan said he'd been talking with you about this and that you were already doing some, some digging. Do we have an idea how many employees are impacted by this and what the, like, the dollar costs to the city as far as what our, I assume there's a, a cost to us, that's why we did this in the first place, we were saving money. Like, how many of our employees are affected by this? How many will be affected, say, in the next, you know, two to four years? And then, you know, what, what's it saving the city or conversely, what would it cost the city if we did away with this? Is that the kind of work that Commissioner Gillan has you digging up the answers to?
Yes, so the actuary is going to do that. So it, it probably is going to affect around fifteen employees. It's typically from the rank, and the police department is going to be from the rank of captain and above. So captains, deputy chief, and chief. And then the fire department is going to be from battalion chief, deputy chief, and chief. The, the ranks of up to lieutenant, the max salary in those areas are about seventy-four to eighty-five thousand, if I'm, I'm going off the top of my head. So somebody would have to do twenty-five to thirty years before they'd have the multiplier, years of service and average final compensation to reach the max benefit of fifty-five hundred a month as a pension. So, so we're probably looking at, if they had a continuation of the ten percent deduction or contribution from the employee check until they've made the salary of seventy thousand dollars and then the rest of the salary, you know, for the remaining of the year, did not get a contribution taken from that, you're probably looking at anywhere on the, on the lower side to, to three to five thousand a person. And on a, you know, a hundred and eighty thousand dollar salary could be, you know, ten or fifteen thousand. So I, I anticipate an impact of approximately eighty thousand, just doing some rough math. You know, the actuary obviously is going to, to run a sound mathematic equation, but my thought is probably around eighty thousand dollars annually, annually would be the impact. But the impact is the fact that the employees are paying into a pension that they will not get a benefit for. So we're just basically taking the burden off the employee to contribute to a pension they're not going to get. And then in, as a result of that, we will have a higher contribution because their employee contributions won't be going into the fund.
Gotcha. All right, I really appreciate you answering those questions and I look forward to getting the answers. Do you have an idea when the actuary is going to run those numbers and give you an answer?
So I've, I've sent them a couple reminders since the August fourth meeting. When I talked to them at that meeting, the actuary seemed to think it would, wouldn't be any big deal to put it together. So why we don't have it at this point, I don't know. But I know we have several staff members that, that keep a fire under my chair at my office, letting me remind me, you know, reminding me every time we're about to get a, a new raise in October and, and thank you all for that. But it's like, okay, remember now, I'm going to be making more money and I'm contributing more to a pension that I'm not going to get. So they keep reminding me and I keep sending reminders to the, to the pension board administrator, asking, you know, to get the information as quickly as possible.
Okay. Will you, will you try to follow up after this meeting and let me know what you hear when you hear it?
Of course, absolutely.
I appreciate that. Thank you, I don't have any more questions for you, Mr. Sexton, I appreciate that. I don't know if anyone else in the commission does before I go on with my comments.
Actually, if I could make a quick comment on this, since we're on the topic. You know, so the, the number we're looking at is once your final, your five years average is a little over seventy-three thousand, then you max out at that sixty-six thousand dollar a year benefit. You know, so what it really does is it creates this enormous disincentive for anybody to stay here and, and move into. and move into that upper, those upper tiers of police or fire. So, we've got to do something to fix it. And I think this is a good starting place. But, you know, that money that, that if we go, you know, the, the one thing that, you know, unfortunately, I just don't think financially is on the table is, is getting rid of the cap. Because that would cap, that would throw us right back into the situation where, you know, it'd add a million bucks or something probably to the, our annual contribution into the, into the, the fund. But I do think that once we, you know, we, if we do like the social security model and they don't pay anything in over like 73 and change, and they're putting the remainder into something, I think we owe it to them to provide some sort of match. You know, I mean, we need to make sure these people stay here, you know, and, you know, you know, it scares me to think of somebody like, like Deputy Chief Young, you know, who's a young man, has young kids. And, you know, he's going to do what's right for the city, but he's also going to do what's right for his family. You know, so, you know, as we look through this, we need to think about, you know, making sure we don't do, we, we fix this. Because it's going to cause us to lose talent, institutional knowledge, you know, respected people, both in police and fire, if we don't figure out a way to make this, make this fair. Because today it's not.
Yeah, I was thinking it's just not fair. Yeah. So, that's a good point, Commissioner Gilliland. And I mean, I think that's something that you and I and all the commissioners have been addressing a lot in the last couple of years is, for a long time, there was issues with this, the entry level pay for some of these positions. We were not competitive, and we may still not be competitive across the board in every position in our emergencies responders. But then, now we're seeing that there's a problem at the top end. And just doing the quick math, you know, you could hit that $66,000 cap in 20, 25 years of service and still have, you know, you know, what, 10 years of your, a career or more to go. I mean, you could hit that two-thirds of your way through your career. You could hit that in your, you know, if you pointed out with Deputy Chief Young, you could hit that in your, in your 40s, depending on when you started working for the city, I suppose. So, to me, that's, that's something we've got to fix, particularly when it's no secret that we're going to be looking to try to replace Chief Capri. And, you know, we need to have the ability to recruit and keep our top talent. Obviously, if we move people from the inside up, then we're also going to need to promote other people up to the position. And I would hate to think that there's any incentive for people to leave Daytona because we're not rewarding a career law enforcement or fireperson who's given at least two decades of service to the city. So, you know, you know, I, and I recognize, I don't know how much it's going to be, whether it'll be, you know, your million dollars or, or not, how much it will be. I mean, I, I look forward to getting that data back so we know exactly what we're talking about. But, you know, I, I think that's something that I would like to put on the agenda, to have discussed and, and get the commission to try to resolve that or fix it in the very near future. Because when we go, I mean, let's put it out there. When we go to hire, I look for a new police chief, why would someone like Jakari Young, who is, you know, a popular contender in many people's minds, he's the best choice for the job? Why would he step up to that seat when he's already apparently giving up money that, you know, why, when he's giving in 10% to a pension that he'll never receive and, and has a, you know, many years of service available? Why wouldn't he? And I know in the past, we almost lost him to Tallahassee. I don't know all the other staff we've almost lost or have lost. But that's on my mind as we ask, you know, to replace the chief. We need to make sure that we look out for those people in that position. And it may not be, you know, it's, it's, the saying, oh, I want to look out for the top paid people in the department or something like that may not seem like a great rallying cry. But here, you know, as you point out, institutional knowledge, we've invested a lot in an employee by the time they've been with the city 20, 25 years. We've got a lot of on-the-job training, a lot of departmental knowledge, a lot of contin, you know, education and experience has gone into that person. And, you know, we, they're a very valuable tool to us at that point. And to think that we're not doing everything we can for those people is, is unacceptable to me. To, to think that they're paying for a benefit they're not getting is even worse. I mean, if you're talking about taking 10%, they're paying in, you know, 20% of their, of their potential benefit. So, if they're going to get 5,000 a month and they're paying in 1,000 of it a month, that's, that's huge. That's a huge disincentive. So, you know, and I, I don't know that we can pick out individuals and say, okay, for this person, we're going to change it. For this person, we're going to change it. Or we have to do some kind of, you know, compression analysis and start, you know, rolling it back for different graduating classes, so to speak. I don't know how it was implemented in the early, mid 2000s. I don't know if you remember Commissioner Gilliland or Mr. Chisholm, if you remember how it was done, if it was rolled in, if we need to roll it back out. But certainly, if we open up and start having, you know, a, people putting in for a job position where that's going to be an issue, that I think we need to do something to say. If you're applying for this position, or if you're applying to be our chief, or chief of fire, any of the other positions where an outsider would have a different and preferential financial treatment, we need to eliminate that. Because we don't want to, we don't want to tell, I don't want to send out the message that when it goes to promoting or recruiting top talent, that it's just better for it to be someone outside because our own people have a financial disincentive. I don't know how we phrase that. I don't know if legally we can do that, if we get into legal problems when we start changing that definition. But to me, it's imperative that, at least when we talk about police chief and some of these other positions, that anyone applying for it, whether they're from the city or from outside the city, be given the same compensation and not be penalized in effect for having worked for the city for, you know, 20 or 30 years. So, I mean, and I think we need to make that, I would like to have the commission make that decision soon so that when we put out the applications, when we start recruiting these people, there's no question in the candidate's mind what the city's going to do for them if they get selected for that job. I think that's very important, and I think we would be making a real mistake not to do that. Again, I don't know if we can pick the position like I'm proposing, or if we have to do it more categorically. I don't want to do anything that gets us into legal trouble. But I would like this, Legal and Mr. Sexton to, you know, figure out, is there a way to do what I'm proposing? Unless the rest of the commission doesn't.
You know, Aaron, Aaron, I think the thing to do right now is just wait on the actuarial study. We hit, we should have soon, and then, and then that'll give us a little more information to make an informed decision.
Well, I mean, I guess it, to me, it doesn't matter what the amount is, whether it's 80 or 60 or 90. It's the, the idea that when someone's applying for this position, I want to remove that. Whether it's, you know, regardless of how much money it is for that position, I want to make it even across the board for all applicants. So, that an internal applicant is going to get treated and paid the same as an external applicant. In addition to fixing, I agree with you as far as fixing the problem for all of our employees. Absolutely. We need to know the net impact. But as far as when we start advertising for positions, or when we start looking to fill and recruit these top positions, I want to make that part even. And whether it costs 60 or 80, that's not as important to me as making the statement that we reward and promote our employees at least equally with outside staff coming in. So, you know, and again, the commission may not agree with me, and, you know, it may be premature. A lot of people may say they really want those numbers. But as a policy statement, me as commissioner for my zone, my policy declaration is that anyone who's worked in our fire, rescue, police, or our city for 20, 30 years should not feel that they are at a competitive disadvantage or financial disadvantage in seeking, in applying for a promotion versus an outside person coming in. And I will do it, and I will vote always in favor of eliminating that so that we can keep and retain our top talent and promote from inside if they are worthy of the position.
Aaron, we all agree. You have no, we all agree.
Okay. Good. Well, I mean, then I, I, if, if that's the case, and we need to get those numbers back, but I would like to get a, something from Legal or Mr. Sexton or the manager on how we go about fixing this in quick order so that we, we can have it available when we go to fill the chief position with retirement of Chief Capri. Because I think that's the first position that I'm aware of, that this would be coming to a head. If there's something else coming up before then, then, you know, I'm not aware of it. But that's what I'd like to do. I don't know if that, how we do that procedurally, Mr. Mayor, but that's what I would like to ask that we do.
Okay. I, I, I think it's on the short list. So, Jim's got it. They'll get it fixed so we can get, get to the bottom of it. We don't want to lose talent. Anything else, Commissioner?
Uh, no, that's it. So, what's the?
You don't talk. Don't you talk.
We'll get a report back from Sexton, and then we'll come up with a plan then on how we fix it. Is that kind of the, the thought?
Yes, that's the thought.
Okay. Just want to be sure. Thank you all very much. That's all I've got. Have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Commissioner May?
I'm going to run it real quick. Okay, here we go. So, happy birthday. Happy birthday. Have a pleasant evening, ma'am. So, I think this applies.
Next meeting.
It's next meeting. Oh, gosh, I thought you had planned it. Well, heck, we can be here till 11:00. I'm good. Joking, teasing you. So, there was something I was looking at. There were two points I wanted to address in the manager's update for starters. We're doing the, the rehabilitation work at night on MLK. Is that correct? So, there shouldn't be, some of them are. So, it shouldn't be any impediment at all for businesses, or we're not expecting it to be anything drastic. It's just something maintenance-wise, correct?
On MLK?
Yes, yes, sir.
I don't know. Is that, is that a night job?
But it's, it's nothing that will obstruct business or anything. And I appreciate the fact that you let everybody know ahead of time. I think that was fantastic. So, thank you. We appreciate that. Other thing was, you know, the community always speaks, and I listen to them. And there was a little issue, a little misunderstanding, a clarification that needed on the, the tennis pro concept that we had going on at LPGA. The chatter seemed to be that we were paying somebody $82,000 a year to be a tennis pro. And that's, in fact, not the case. And so, I'm so grateful that in our manager's update, we outlined exactly what that was. And in fact, the tennis pro is paying the city, and that his income is completely based on his performance, and that he then reimburses the city a percentage fee. So, he's, in fact, generating his own income as it relates to that. And we appreciate him being there because he is eminently qualified for that position, and he's really providing a really good service at an affordable rate. So, I'm glad that we got some clarification on that. Moving on. So, I would like to know, since Mr. Charles Bryant is no longer with us, I believe, what are we going to do with Halloween and Christmas? Like, do we have any thoughts or plans? Or are we working toward anything for Christmas this year, whether it's a car parade, et cetera, keeping COVID in mind? Could we start to think about that? Or if there are going to be churches who are doing Halloween from the car trunk business? Any special provisions they have to go through in order to make that happen? Because I think people might be kind of questioning that a little bit. And then, two things happened this week. That in, they, there were residents in Zone 3 or complaints in Zone 3. Two of them were police-related. First one, I would very much like Captain Lee to speak, and the second to, I want to say Deputy Chief Jakari. So, Captain Lee first. It was a resident in Zone 3 but has a business in Zone 4 contacting me. I've known this couple for two and a half years since I campaigned, and I met them while campaigning. Issue was that she was robbed at her store. And so, we started having a conversation about this. She called me because she was concerned about going back to work. And then I alerted Captain Lee. So, Captain Lee, could you tell us what happened, please?
I think that Deputy Chief is going to address it too. But one, I can briefly talk about what happened when you called me. I called the citizen back, talked to them about their concerns, addressed some of their issues as, as it related to what had happened at their business, and then relayed some information that they had provided to us, to our detectives. And our detectives didn't have some of that information quite yet. Some of it they did. They were able to take what the, the individual had developed themselves and jump, jump into action, really. And probably within, probably 24 hours or less of us having a phone conversation, they were able to take that person into custody. That was the excellent work of our, our robbery homicide division. It was a case that was assigned to Michael Jagger, one of our detectives. And the robbery homicide unit jumped in and took that. They were able to execute a search warrant, recover some, some items, and receive a full confession from the individual.
So, I'll tell you what I appreciate. From the moment that I had the conversation with this particular person, within 10 minutes of our conversation, I contacted you, and within less than 24 hours, it was done.
Absolutely.
So, thank you, sir. I so appreciate all of your service. Thank you, and your team. Thank you. Thank you. And then, Deputy Jakari, sir. So, I received an email, as did we all, from a resident on Beachside, and the issue seemed to be Sun Splash Park. So, I think the, there's a little bit of confusion in terms of, you know, what we would like to do at Sun Splash Park versus the limitations that we have in enforcement. Could you possibly address the situation and then tell us what some of the issues are, please?
Okay. First of all, Jakari Young, Deputy Chief of Police, thank you for the question. So, over the past few weeks, as you've already stated, we've kind of been inundated, inundated with complaints from residents over there in reference to some transient activity, more specifically sleeping and camping under the pavilions there. The issue for us is that Sun Slat, Sun Splash Park is a county park. And without that park being properly posted, we are very limited in what enforcement action, if any, we can take in that park. And the way it's set up is that the park has to be posted by the managing entity, which is County Coastal. So, as a result of that, we have been in discussions with County Coastal this week, as, as well as Ray Manchester from Beach Patrol. And I believe Chief Capri also shot a call to County Manager Reckenwald in reference to getting these signs posted as quickly as possible. So, they have told us that it is definitely in the works, and that as soon as these signs are posted, they will let us know. And we can go in and take the appropriate action to alleviate the, the problems and the concerns, just as we do in Breakers Park and every other park that is within our jurisdiction.
So, anyway, time frame. Well, also, can they put up temporary signs at all, just to help us a bit? Because the complaint is quite serious. And I myself, I live in the area. I myself have seen what is occurring. And I guess my, my question is, are there any signs there that say how many hours, sun up, sundown? Is there any kind of regulation at all?
There are, there are a couple signs there, but the only signs that have hours, it regulates the hours for parking, which was 11:00 P to, between 11:00 P and 5:00 A, parking is prohibited. But those are the only signs up there that give you any type of a timeframe as far as that park. And I myself tried to lock them into a timeframe for getting these signs posted, and it, it was kind of a loose response. So, this is something that we're going to continue to, to talk with them on, try to see if we can get them put up, you know, as expeditiously as possible.
Thank you so much.
I just, real quick, I just wanted to kind of circle back to the robbery incident that you referenced, because there was a concern brought up by the person that reached out to you about the mask ordinance. Simply because the robber was wearing a mask, she had concerns that we wouldn't be able to identify and obtain an arrest warrant for, for the suspect due to the mask. So, as a result of that, we started to delve in a little bit deeper and had one of the analysts do a study as far as our robbery, since the mask ordinance has been in place, to see if there was an uptick in that. And there is an uptick, but it's not, it's not related to the mask per se. What it is, is when we were under the state of emergency, when we were under the governor's stay-at-home order, that really helped us out as far as overall crime. Everything was down. And then, once people started coming back out, started coming to work, started returning to business as usual, we saw that increase. But we also did that study for the same timeframe, this same time period for the past three years, and we're about where we are all the time. We're about at the same. So, I could say confidently that the, the masks have nothing to do with the, the increase in, in any robberies or any other crimes.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. And then, finally, last week, we had a very long meeting about the scooter situation. And so, I was, I've still been receiving some, some complaints about it. And what I've requested is that any complaints are sent to the entire commission, along with pictures or commentaries or whatever. Said I'm not the only person tasked with this, but they were all very much aware of what is still going on. And Attorney Jagger, when does everything go into effect with regard to the licensing?
So, your operational restrictions have already gone into effect. They, they went into effect when the ordinance was adopted. Your licensing restrictions go into effect today. Tonight, you adopted the licensing fee. Your franchise requirements go into effect 90 days from adoption. So, we're working on the RFP in order to establish criteria for the franchise. on the RFP in order to establish criteria for the franchise agreement.
All right. Thank you so much, and again, thank you everybody for your time this evening.
Thank you. Commissioner Gilliland?
I'll try and talk fast. We had TPO this morning. So there was a thing brought up as a presentation, Jim, this is in Jim, there's a group that is these experienced cyclists, the guys that ride really fast, like on the highways and things like that. And what they do is they're generally people that are in their club, ride a hundred or two-hundred miles a day. And they've got like these routes around the country, they got forty-seven thousand miles identified, but they're primarily on, on, on state and federal roads. So they're going through this process of rerouting. So I know they're, we didn't get into the Daytona piece of it, but the Ormond piece was to get them off of A-1A and put them on John Anderson, which is, would be a complete disaster, you can't get two cars by each other on John Anderson. So just make sure that we have input into that, because we don't want this to end up in the part of town that, that can't accommodate.
What's their name, you know what it is?
I, I can get it for you.
Okay.
Um, let's see, we can pass on that one. Our long-range transportation plan was passed this morning, and it did include the Tamoca River Bridge, so that means it is now eligible for state and federal funding. And tonight, thank you very much, we got the two-fifty passed to put towards the PDNE, which hopefully will get that project kind of jump-started. But, you know, having it in the LRTP was a, was a significant part of that, because you can't use any, any federal dollars for it. And lastly, the, you know, we rejected the, the safety plan for Main Street and Bike Toberfest at our last meeting. You know, obviously, the ship has sailed on having the safety plan in the private businesses, but I still think we need to have one in the public property. And personally, I liked their idea of shutting down the north, or the eastbound lanes on Main Street, and having that, that bigger area, you know, right after our meeting, bars reopen the next Monday, you know, we're going to have tens of thousands of people down there, and at fifty percent capacity, they're not going to be in the restaurants and bars, they're going to be out on the street. And I think that, you know, you know, Jim, this isn't something that needs commission approval, but my opinion is, you know, we need to have some kind of plan down there to try and minimize the effects, you know, of this, of people congregating, you know, to the extent that we can. You know, obviously, with Ormond, the county, and some other jurisdictions, you know, going forward, you know, those people are still going to come here. So, you know, I think it's, you know, it's the responsible thing for us to go ahead and make sure that we have some sort of, of public property safety plan, you know, for, for Bike Toberfest. And that's it.
And, and is it, is it not a good idea to keep the traffic going one way on Main Street during that time?
We'll, we'll work on the traffic plan for this, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
That's basically what we're going to do.
They had that loop where you'd go westbound on Main, north on Peninsula, east on Auditorium, and then south on A-1A, and then that was sort of your loop. But it set up, you know, in a normal, you know, bike event, you've got six feet between the back of the bikes that are parked on the sidewalks and the buildings. You know, this will open up thirty feet at least, I think, you know, well, twenty-five, thirty feet from the center line, you know, with the CBB recommended, from the center line to the buildings on the south side, you know, if that can be made pedestrian. Now, law enforcement may say that's a terrible idea, we can't do it for, for some other safety reasons, but, you know, if there's something we can do, I'm just advocating that we, we look at it, and we try and do something, because it's going to be, it's going to be an event, so.
It's going to be, it's going to be.
Could we ask the chief to weigh in on that? Do you have any thoughts, sir? Are you, are you working the plan? Okay.
Yeah, he told us that in the last meeting. I have a question for Commissioner Gilliland, though. There was an email you sent in regards to a shooting that involved fire, did you ever get a response to that email?
Uh, we never did get a report on that, did we?
What are you talking about, the shooting?
There were, yeah, there was a fire in an apartment complex, in a unit.
Yes, yes.
And then the apartment next door, they were going to clear it, you know, because of spread. And it turned out the building manager was there, they unlocked the door, and it was chained from the inside, so they realized, hey, there's somebody in here. Somehow they got the door open, got inside, and at the end of the hallway, and I've got kind of pieces of the story, there's a guy with a handgun who gets off at least one, if not two rounds, that are firefighters. So...
We, we got, we're, we're working on this report, there's two, there's two reports in that I've seen, and there's, we have a third party reviewing it, because not everybody's agreeing with what, what was said. So it's not complete right now.
Oh, boy, well, you guys just opened up a can that's going to go somewhere down the road, and people will be down here tomorrow knocking on your doors, wanting to, wanting the story. So, as soon as you guys can get the, get it.
Well, tomorrow, I think, is two weeks since it happened. So, I think tomorrow is two weeks since it happened. So, I mean, this is not a new event.
Not a new event.
You know, this is something that, honestly, I think it should have been handled in twenty-four to forty-eight hours. Here we are, two weeks later, and it's still being addressed as something that I'm not, not very happy about.
Okay.
Ditto.
Yeah. Okay, well, let's, let's get the answer, so we can, so we will know. Anything else?
No.
No? Okay. Commissioner Henry?
No comments tonight, thank you.
All righty. Let me get my list here.
Oh, no. Hold the list.
Okay. I simply want to say tonight how delighted I am to work with all of you. You guys are doing a great job, and as a commission, as a city, you know, we are still a nation in COVID. We're a city in COVID, we're still under, you know, a state of emergency. Our residents are clamoring for certain things that we can't give them, you know, and, you know, trick-or-treating. You know, I'm recommending that folks take on this, this idea of if you've got more than one room in your house, you have little kids, you know, set up each room, and just do a trick-or-treat at, at home. That's sort of what I'm planning to do at my house. We're going to set up all the different rooms, and I'm, I'm not going to do any decorating, maybe my wife will, but there will be candies all over the house, but we're not going to anyone's trunk or their door to take candy out of there. Because what we, we have to remember as we're in COVID, is that the better things get, the more money people will spend. We can't just assume that just because they get better, then we just go back to normal. They get better, and we keep some restrictions, so that people will have confidence and we learn how to behave better. You know, my hope is that because we're wearing masks, actually, that there's some evidence that it will help with the flu season, and because we're washing our hands more. The more we do those things, they're going to, they should, we hope, I know not all of scientists are saying that, but there's a good chance that flu season may not be as bad as it normally is. But let's continue to practice good habits, be safe, be as prudent as we can. And the last thing I want to say is that there's, there's so many issues going on for us. I see we're all involved, this, this, this work during COVID, while I hadn't gone, I had eaten one piece of chicken, hadn't been to a chicken dinner in, what, almost six months I haven't been to a chicken dinner where I had to be out at some function? You know what I mean? A chicken dinner, or where they give you that rubber chicken? Hadn't seen one, hadn't been to one. And the green beans and mashed potatoes, twenty-five dollars for the meal, seventy-five dollars for the plate. But I'm saying that, not, not really to be totally funny, although it's, it is sarcastic. But I have never been busier in the work that we're doing, you know, and, and I've never had to read more and engage with more people who are interested in business in this city. People are interested in our work, and our residents are clamoring for our support. So I say to each of you who are engaged in this work, and everyone in the staff, keep pushing, keep working hard, find ways to de-stress yourselves, and find ways to de-stress our community, because we see a lot of incidents where we have mental health challenges confronting us, because we're still in a pandemic. So, those are my remarks. Be safe, be great, be Daytona Beach. Good night.
Mr. Mayor, just one thing.
Oh, my, my apologies.
That's all right. You got a workshop Monday, four-thirty.
That's right. We do.
That's it, Mayor.
Bob?
No, sir.
No? Okay. Good night, everyone.